Because there was some confusion around the bylaws that didn't get that extra phrase in. I'll remind the board that the bylaws now have that phrase in.
Did you enjoy the nice weather?
I think I know where you're from. Also, I guess the bylaws, the agenda was sent out twice, one dated May 10th to May 14th, or something, I was confused.
She put May 20th, the next board meeting date on it, instead of the May 15th date.
Oh, is that what it was? Because I was trying to look for a change and I couldn't find it.
Yeah, she had to, it's, the stamp, the stamp on each of the documents. Because those stamps have something to do with the way they file stuff.
Oh, one was dated May 20th?
Yes.
And I think that's the one I unfortunately worked out a pretty good way. I did it because I created the latest version.
Wait, something was added?
It's in there.
It's not in mine?
Yeah, the note that she sent you, the email highlighted the changes, the from 20th to 15th, and that John added that it changed his exhibit six.
All right, well, I don't have that change.
Well, it should be in the back.
Yeah, but not the one dated, the latest dated, the 20th, I don't know why.
The latest was made dated May 15th.
Yeah, I know, I know, but I looked at the revision of May 20th, that's the most current.
Are we ever going to do the different seating arrangements?
Uh, yes, I've talked to Jerry, we can't do it May 20th because we'll be at Fairfield Woods, but June we will, you know, and essentially it's just going to be a U.
Otherwise I'm billing it from my side.
We'll see how it goes.
We'll see how it goes, you know. So, she loses.
We got our exercise walking up.
We went down to go up. She asked me how I survived in New York City.
Does she go up?
Yeah, I live on the 18th floor.
She's Spider Woman, right?
Most times, sometimes, depends on my mood if I can get in. You had to see when I went to Radio City to see who was David Letterman or whoever. They had to stop the elevators and take me in my own route. The one that's so nice, because I get it.
So, you've never been to the top of the United States before?
I have. I was dumb and young, I was at the top of the World Trade Center. So, um...
Who's missing, all right, Jen is at Tomlinson or something for something.
What's that?
I was gonna say, who's missing, Jen is at Tomlinson for something, at concert or something.
What's she gonna tell me?
She's delayed.
Where's the, um, yes?
I don't see an email from Jennifer.
My son is getting a draft.
That? Oh, yeah, no, it's a, no, no, it's not. USB monitor, glass or focus or something.
So, now I have my notes, but I don't, oh, that's it, too, that's it, too. So, what'd you say?
I was like, okay, I have it here. Yeah, I got the December packet crap.
Okay, so you have your, so...
There you are, thank you.
I don't know, I just know where to check. I think I was told, it's a Friday night. He said to me, hey, but you have to wait outside, like parents, call kids, the parents are in the gym. Probably got this instruction from my daughter. I know, we're missing one.
So, uh...
It is pork.
Oh, yeah?
Whereas I pull in, I'm like, should I park in the garage?
I think we're, to check, I don't know.
I never did.
I never have.
And I was like, oh, I should park in the garage, and I was like, yeah, I'm late, I better go. Last quarter.
Since the last quarter.
Oh, man, I think that's a week or 10 days.
It's too close.
I think I see you guys more than my children.
Are you acknowledging or not?
They had the concert, were you at the concert?
Today's?
The one from January back at Ole Miss?
That's, that's, well, whatever it was.
How long did it take us to wait?
Another two minutes, you know, we did kind of make a commitment that all nine would be here.
Yeah, it said done by Kaylee.
Wait another two minutes.
What do you think, I'm surprised, nobody ran the traffic under which it's coming?
Raiders of the Lost Ark, so Mr. Mo DeCone comes down on the road. Raiders of the Lost Hat, you know, Hat, or Whip. And then he gives a speech and he says, and now I have to go through the rivers, right, to find something. So Kaylee did this whole video of him going through the rivers. It was great, I was really proud of him. I didn't even know, she just said to me, because I got a surprise.
What's that?
They don't know what's gonna happen, so they're usually curious as to what's gonna happen.
You can give them a run for their money.
There's some bad ass way to carry it.
She's done something.
Debate.
My favorite, she did two things that I just love.
Most of them, they don't come to speak.
Santa's cookie tasters. She said I had to taste all the cookies and he's supposed to leave them laid out for Santa. So they did Santa, and they both were wearing Santa, it was hysterical. And then, one of her class assignments, they had to do Greek goddesses, the gods of the day and age. So she wrote this, she has three friends, and, oh, she did, who was the god of love? Yeah, so her friend Jennifer, this little blonde, she very bright, hello.
What's happening, Phil?
Love, F, D, Earth, I mean, yeah.
My grandson's coming in, uh...
Friday night?
Been with us for a week.
The teachers said, Kaylee, that is an A plus, nobody's ever...
Two in a couple of months, February, March, April, three months.
It's nice to see someone.
Twenty-seven months.
Charging out for a while while the parents go away?
They're here because they've got two four destination weddings in the Boston area.
Always highlighter?
So they'll drop them off, go to the wedding on Saturday, Sunday, come back. So that weekend and then the following weekend, they have another destination wedding in Boston.
Do you often take care of your grandson?
We're up in Rochester probably every six to eight weeks, several weekends.
Or you would sort of take charge? You just visit, visit more, take charge, you have to be responsible.
There's more take charge, but I mean, we just visit, by being, that suddenly means that two of them can go.
I can't, I sort of, this is how they do it, they said, never leave home without them, because I can't believe it.
So what's the scoop here?
These kids are so...
No, no, Jessica's, we're talking her down.
Yeah, for those of you who are wondering, when we set the date, we set it with the intent of having all nine members here, and so we are waiting a little bit for the ninth member to get here. I hope that you have patience while we have patience, thank you. No, I mean, in terms of getting, yeah, making sure Steve and others are...
Too much. That's the problem.
So, I'm gonna make a couple of comments and then turn to you because you want to suspend the rules.
I always forget it's there.
Just opened up.
I said, no, it's gonna be fun.
It can't last long.
It did, long enough for me to get in.
And I'm supposed to pour all day tomorrow.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, well, that's not good.
Yeah, tomorrow, tomorrow night's like, N H two.
Yeah, tomorrow's the bad, yeah.
Tomorrow night's special. Did it change it? It may have moved it forward on us.
I didn't realize that. All I know is I planted grass seed on Sunday and said, all right, I don't have to do a lot of watering this week.
You gotta hope it doesn't wash away.
Yeah, exactly. I looked at him going, it don't look like anything's happened or sprouted yet, and I'm like, it's still, tomorrow's gonna go whoosh.
I'm not very successful planting grass seeds. I plant, I throw it out all the time and nothing ever seems to come up. You gotta really water it persistently.
I was doing it once a day.
See, I wasn't, I don't do that, I just sort of lay it out.
And then, well, in the summer, I'm lazy, I know, and that's why it burns out.
Yeah, it doesn't, it never sprouts.
So, I'm like, all right, we have my daughter's bot midspun three weeks, so I'm like, all right, if I could just grow grass on the crappy patches, and it could die like a couple of weeks later, I don't care, it's just one. It's funny because I think in Home Depot, there was like three different versions of whatever, Scots and whatever, and the one in the middle is the contractor one, it's like 20 bucks cheaper, like you said.
Okay, we'll start in two minutes.
What do I get for 20 bucks? The ladies explain, do we know where she is?
We think it's actually great.
Like, if it doesn't sprout anything by Sunday.
Oh, no, she's coming, oh, yeah, she's coming, but it started late.
I think what we'll do is, we'll, because John's gonna make a motion to hear from the public. So I think we can...
So is this still Jen's?
Hopefully she'll get changes between this and this. When was the last time just many people showed up for a bylaws discussion?
Right.
I know, yeah, I don't know, we'll find out. Well, the order of business I put in is to move the public up front. It used to be, so it's to move it up front, and probably six or seven years from now, people will see it.
And then in the middle of the vote, now there's a new board, and they go, well, we don't want to do that. And then they have to amend, so this whole, like, about the recording.
Conducting it in business, in public business.
Or we don't, or we stopped it with. I think that's a fair assumption.
I surveyed, I'll make this comment.
Yeah, so I guess that's why.
When I was at Cave, I talked about 18...
Because it's obtained from the district.
Right. Okay, let's, um... That is an extra step. Okay, there's the paper.
Oh, right.
I think we will get started. So I call this a special meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education to order for Thursday, May 15th, 2014. Present is Mrs. Eileen Lou McCormick, Mr. John Convatito, Ms. Donna Carnell, Mrs. Jessica Gerber, myself, Philip Dewire, Mr. Paul Fattabene. We expect Mrs. Jennifer Maxon Cannelly, she's running late from a school event, but we expect her. Mr. John Llewellyn and Mr. Paul, sorry, Mr. Mark Patton.
Stay here.
It's a long night, yeah. If you could stand for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So you'll notice a chair that's not even there. Dr. Tidal had another commitment, actually a family commitment, on this particular date, and so we said certainly he ought to spend some time with his family. And Ms. Karen, Mrs. Karen Parks, who is the deputy superintendent, is here with us in the event that there's a question that needs to be put to the central office, she's here in that capacity. A comment, if I could, there's been a couple of emails that have gone out in postings, and it's clear that Mr. Convatito wishes to suspend the rules to allow for public comment, so that the public understands, we frequently and always take public comment, but at special meetings, and a special meeting is any meeting that has not been posted as of the end of the year, December, with the town clerk. So any meeting we have after the official posting of all regular meetings is done, has to be termed a special meeting, and our bylaws don't permit public comment in special meetings. And so we need to suspend the rules accordingly. We have to balance the desire to have the public engaged in the debate, if you will, and the conversation, with also running kind of orderly and efficient meetings. We have nine different items on the agenda tonight, and so what I would like to suggest is that if, assuming the board goes along with the public comment, that we would start the meeting with allowing any members of the public who are here to speak on any of the items, or all of the items, or some of the items, to go first, so that we can hear from all of the public and then conduct our business. So I would propose that as a way of balancing both the desire of the public to speak and us being able to go through the agenda. So with that as a comment, Mr. Convatito, do you wish to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules. These agenda items were carried over from a regular meeting in which the public would have had opportunity to comment.
Make a motion, do we have a second, Mr. Fattabene? Is there a discussion on the motion, Mr. Fattabene?
I guess, as a point of order.
Have you finished your argument? Yes.
I guess I would consider this, in essence, a motion to add an agenda item, more so an emotion to suspend the rules, because I'm not sure our rules prohibit public comment. It's just that public comment is not on the agenda tonight.
Our bylaws have a specific order of business for special meetings that don't include public comment. And so therefore, to suspend the rules would then allow for public comment. Any other discussion?
Question, will that be, as usual, limited to two minutes?
That, yeah, I would assume so, yes.
Can you point to the bylaws which indicate the agenda?
It's Article, Article 5, Section 4.
Since we all have them.
B, for special meetings. Any other discussion?
Yeah, hold, let's, give us a chance to read it, please, Phil. Article 5.
That indicates special meetings may be held at any time and shall be called in the manner prescribed by law. Reasonable notice of any special meeting and of its purpose shall therefore be given to members of the board. I certainly agree that regular meetings have a specified agenda in our bylaws.
If I, Mr. Fattabene, if I could refer you to page nine. Section 4. Number B.
Right, all right, I appreciate that.
Agenda, each special meeting shall be, and it lists four things, that does not include public comments. So suspending the rules allows public comment to be put in there.
Thank you for that clarification, I appreciate that in the point of order.
Other discussion? Or comments prior to taking action?
I actually have a question.
Yeah.
If that's the case, we're suspending the rules, that would make this our agenda? That which was distributed? Is that our agenda?
It would suspend the rules to allow public comment to be allowed.
Sorry, is this our agenda for tonight?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, so actually, whether or not we believe in suspending the rules or not, I think it's actually adding an item to an agenda. I don't actually believe that it is, you are suspending the rules, that's fine, but I think you're adding to an agenda that's been published.
I can go at it either way.
Is it, I'm not sure that it's a distinction without a difference, but, but...
I'll withdraw the motion.
The difference would be...
I'll withdraw the motion. I'll make a motion that public comment be added to the agenda. Here's, here's the issue, okay? Public comment, you can add public comment, that's a single line item for public comment, okay? Suspending the rules and reverting to our old rules allows for public comment after each voting item, or for each voting item.
So you're, with, with, you want to make a motion to add public comment prior to item number three? Is that what you're saying? Is that your motion?
My intent is that the public shall have the same rights to speak at this meeting as they would at any other regular meeting. Now, if we want to come to a consensus on how to construct that motion, I don't have an issue with that. Since this was a carryover from a regular meeting, and they would have had those same opportunities.
I'm in agreement with the, the public should speak.
Yes.
I just, I just want to, I guess, be clear as to the rationale, as how we do that and what the vote is. And I agree with the chair that now that we do have a special meeting agenda that is not on, and therefore, it would be a motion to suspend the rules and add an item to the agenda, I would think, but, you know, whatever motion you want, has the same effect.
I'm, I'm not convinced that we have to add a line item for public comment, because the only comment that I really want is that people, before we make a vote, is to hear from the public on those items, okay? So a motion to suspend the rules to allow that, under a special meeting format, would allow to do that.
Let me clarify the motion, your intent then is to permit public comment on every amendment to the bylaws we're gonna propose?
Right, because that's the...
Not just in the beginning of our discussion?
Right.
Well, that was clarification, then, I misunderstood that amendment.
Changed. And so the board understands that that means an individual from the public would be able to stand up nine different times, 10 different ti, yeah, 10 different times, because we have to take the main motion to, you know...
That would have been the procedure at any regular meeting.
To me, a more efficient way of doing that is to allow the public to speak on all of the items and have us hear it, and then be able...
If there's anything, if there's something on the board, I don't have an objection.
Mr. Patton, does it matter to you which way we go?
No, I don't think so, I think doing it as an amendment to the agenda.
No, I mean, whether we take all of the public comment up front or do it item by item.
I think, I'd like to hear everything up front.
Okay, Mr. Llewellyn?
I think it'd be more productive to have it item by item, that way they can address the concerns at the time. That way they can address the concerns at the time.
Mr. Fadabene?
Motion on the floor is.
Well, he's constructing the motion. I want to get a consensus.
So we have a motion, we're debating?
No, I want to get a consensus on this discussion.
We're trying to get a consensus of the board.
So that the motion can be properly worded. It's been withdrawn at the moment, so we're having a discussion that might guide Mr. Convatito in constructing a motion.
I guess, as long as the public gets to speak, I don't really have a preference one way or the other. I think although it might be more efficient for business to have all comments done initially, rather than at the time of each vote, but as long as the public has an opportunity to speak, the exact procedure doesn't.
I've made my viewpoint known, Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, well, I feel the public has had these, all of the bylaw amendments, so actually, they've been out since December, I think, almost all of them, so they've certainly had ample time to look at them and think if they had any comments they wanted to make. So I would suggest allowing just up front, you know, when they could address specific ones.
Ms. Carnell?
I agree up front, as long as they have the opportunity to speak.
I'll skip over Mr. Convatito and go to Mrs. Lou McCormick.
I'm really fine either way.
What, are you fine either way? Mr. Convatito, it seems as though several are fined up front and a couple of either way, and one.
I'll make a motion to insert into the agenda after item two, public comment.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion? Mrs. Gerber.
Do we get to hear from the public?
Now official, now official debate on that, we've had some discussion on that. Is there any further debate on the motion that people would like to make?
Just one query, is the Chair going to make a time limit for the public as a?
We have not in the past, and so.
When we give two minutes to speak, do we want to give two minutes?
No, there'll be a two-minute time limit, but we have not limited the total amount of time.
All right, but it's a two-minute time limit. I just wanted to.
Yeah, same rules as we always do. Okay. We have not normally, past practice, gone to the public for public comment on administrative matters. I will continue with that past practice and tell the majority of the board says, no, let's go to the public on every motion. So, no, I won't be going to the public on this administrative matter. So with no further debate, all in favor of the motion to add, you have the motion properly worded, right?
It's to insert an item into the agenda after item two for public comment.
Okay. Properly moved and seconded, all in favors, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. It's unanimous, eight to zero. So we are now in public comment. And so you are welcome to make a comment on a specific amendment that you're aware of, that you are of, have an interest in, or you can make comments in general. We'll still have you state your name and address, and ask you to stay within two minutes. And I have my trusty timekeeper over there. So who wishes to comment? After all this debate? For the benefit of trying to organize the meeting, if I have a raise of hands, you know, you don't have to stand up at the moment, but do I have a sense of how many people might be speaking? I have two standing up. I have one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, six or seven. Okay, that gives me a sense, thank you. Please, state your name and address.
My name's Dwayne Lanham.
I think you have to turn it on.
How's that? Nope.
You had it.
How's that? Okay. Dwayne Lanham, 205 Vera Street, Fairfield. Obviously, I'm here for this concern of passing the bylaws and changing them to allow essentially a coup on the Board of Ed. If this is an indication of what decisions the Board of Ed's going to make, it's going to take a long time to make one decision. They say a camel is a horse by committee. I think that's been proven.
We can't hear it all.
I can't speak louder. I'm really concerned.
Thank you.
That this would even be proposed in this town, that we have a Harvard graduate, a PhD, whose job it is to run the Board of Ed, or the Education, and the idea that nine members can do a better job when they can't even make a decision on how the bylaws can be interpreted, it's embarrassing. That's really all I have to say, and I really hope that there's some prudent thought going into the future, because it's not, these people won't always be in power. At some point, there could be a board that says, hey, let's raise the Board of Education budget sky high. Who's to say? It's a dangerous slope, and I really hope you consider what you're contemplating. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Gail Francolinie. I live at 62 Philammon Street, and I did not come with prepared remarks, because I didn't think there was going to be public comment, but thank you for the opportunity for allowing us to do so. I guess I'm coming at this as a businessperson, and as a businessperson, we have clear objectives, we have organizations that have very clear roles and responsibilities, and we go make those happen. And my understanding is we have very clear roles and responsibilities for both district, central office, and the Board of Ed. So my question, it's more of a question that I have than a statement, my question is, why do you feel the need to change the roles and responsibilities? I don't have a clear sense of that, having read everything that I can get my hands on to read. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Steve Baker, 22 Charles Street. I would ask you not to support these motions regarding the responsibilities of the superintendent. I believe it allows personalities and ideals and politics to have too much influence over a nonpartisan position. I believe that once hired a professional educator like our superintendent should have the ability to work freely within their job description to accomplish their goals the best way they seem fit. And if these goals are not met, they can be addressed when the superintendent's contract is up for renewal. Having to consider the objectives of nine bosses with different opinions while maintaining the high standard of education we expect makes for an unhealthy working environment for both the Board of Education and for the superintendent. No matter what the intentions of the motions are now, and these can carry on into the future, the result will be that the children of our town will be the ones to suffer the consequences. Thank you.
Please state your name and address.
Kelly Dunn, 205 Tuckhole Lane. You've all received my initial email, I believe, regarding one specific amendment that I had specific issues with. I hope that you use the, the majority of this meeting, I'll make sure I can hear, still hear me, to actually amend bylaws, if you so choose, that actually help you as a board run more productively as a board, not to diminish Dr. Tittle's responsibilities in any way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Ryanine Lor, 83 Alberta Street. I'm here tonight to thank you for letting us speak, and also to read an email that I sent today, because you might have not had a chance to read it, since I've heard back from one of you who is not here. And it read, "Today I'm writing to you concerning the proposed amendments to the BoE's bylaws that you will be discussing. Some of the proposed amendments can be classified as common sense, like the change of the use of the most current version of Robert Woods of Order as you conduct your business. Other proposed amendments profoundly affect the relationship between the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools. The results of these amendments will be akin to a hospital board, assuming they have the expertise and knowledge to formulate detailed procedures for surgery. While I have high regard for the collective skill and expertise of the board, I believe that this expertise is best utilized in a high-level oversight capacity as opposed to the micromanaging capacity implicit in the proposed amendments. The members of the Board of Ed all have full-time outside jobs and cannot possibly devote the time needed to positively operate in the kind of micromanaging function proposed in the amendments. Similarly, adding a second paragraph to Article Five, Section 3C, to allow for a standing option of having three BoE members request items to be placed on their agenda, as opposed to following the process put forth by the CT state statutes, while well-intended, is bound to have detrimental effect on the efficiency of the board and impede progress and decision-making. As you deliberate the proposed amendments, please do not vote them lightly as one package, but separate them into individual motions. Be very mindful of the possible ramifications these changes will trigger, and be prepared for the long-lasting consequences they will have for our district and its future ability to attract the very best in leadership, should the need arise, and I hope it will not in a long time. And you carry great responsibility and authority. Please use it wisely. Thank you."
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Hi, Doreen Herron, 53 Forest Avenue. I ask you today to please not support the motions that encroach on the responsibilities of our superintendent. We hire superintendents based on their training, experience, and recommendations. If our superintendent fails to perform his duties as expected, you have the opportunity to not renew his contract. Key functions of the district should be set by the professionals we hire, not those who serve on a town body who may be motivated by politics or personal agendas. It's a slippery slope, and I ask that you please consider the ramifications of such drastic changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Suzanne Misca, 123 Rygate Road. Sorry, traffic was a little tough today on 95. I'm glad I got here in time. A, my biggest concern is, please don't play with public comment, as someone who feels that that's such an important piece, and has always been an important piece of the Board of Ed. You know, we preach to parents that we are all in this together, and if you start silencing the public opinion, it's hard to envision that we're really in this together. To me, public opinion is so important to create a positive dialogue, allow you all to have that dialogue, allow us to participate in that dialogue, and that's very important. My other piece is, I've read things today that kind of concerned me, out of this thought that everyone, in what I've read on here for the attachments, was in any way trying to tie the hands of your employee or employees. I do think that there is a responsibility of the board to hold the administration and the school district accountable to the assessment and measurement levels that, you know, only you can do. You know, we, as a parent involved in curriculum committees, can't participate in the implementation plan. I have to count to you guys to be that extra voice of reason in holding the accountability forward. So I ask that, as these amendments are looked at, that you take the due diligence requirement that I think the Board of Ed should have in their responsibility to their employee and employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Sure. Good evening, Trisha Donovan, 164 Tainer Drive. As a PTA member, we change our bylaws all the time as we see fit in order to better govern our unity. If you see fit to change your bylaws, by all means, do it, but let's do it in an open way, where there's discussion back and forth, so everyone can understand where it's coming from. To make suppositions on Facebook pages doesn't make any sense. Let's hear claim, counterclaim, just like we teach our children, and then make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Anne Marie Harper, 166 Buena Vista Road. As an educator for over 20 years, I find it difficult to understand how a board comprised of members not trained in the field of education could think they have more knowledge than the people hired to run our school district. The same way you wouldn't want me to be your attorney just because I've served on a jury is the same reason I'm asking you to trust in those who are qualified to do the job of superintendent and his assistants. Everyone here wants the best for our children, and I have no doubt that all of you do too, but the reality is, unless you're trained and understand how a school district is run, not just because you've been elected to a board and have an interest, but because you really are trained and qualified, you can't do the job of others. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other members of? Please state your name and address.
Yes, thank you. I'm actually going to read a letter.
And you should speak close to the mic.
Thank you. I will speak on behalf of Jennifer Jacobson, who was not able to come here tonight, and she sent this letter to me, asking me to speak on her behalf. So Jennifer Jacobson, 40, Victoria Court, District Three. And her letter is, "Dear Board of Education Members, in regards to the proposed bylaw amendments, we have an excellent superintendent who is qualified and charged with the implementation of policy, creating and implementing the budget, and who acts, excuse me, as the school CEO and educational leader. I would like to ask the board members not to vote for amendments to the Board of Education bylaws that supersede the qualifications and authority of board members to enact, not undermines, underval, excuse me, undervalues the leadership and expertise of our superintendent. Thank you and sincerely, Jennifer Jacobson."
Thank you.
Got it.
Hi, Christine Vitale, 254 Vernon Hill Road. I wasn't really prepared for public comment. I started looking at CAPE, just to get a little bit of background, so I'm just going to read just something that struck me. Give me a sec. "As a leadership team, the board and the superintendent must create a system-wide approach to improving student achievement, recognizing the board's appropriate role as the community's representative, and the superintendent's appropriate role as the professionally-trained educator. The superintendent's responsibility: to serve as the school board's chief executive officer and educational leader." On a personal note, I don't doubt anybody's passion for bringing educational excellence to our school district, and this isn't, it's not even about Dr. Tittle and the personalities on this board. I think that, you know, we need to trust our educators. I think that they come with, hopefully, a goal of bettering the district for all children in our school system. I think as volunteers serving on a board, you may be bringing your own personal agenda, whether it's concerns about your own child, concerns about spending, concerns about where you think it should go, and that's your right to do, and it's your right to represent us in the community. And I would just like to see maybe just more of a collaborative effort between this board and the current superintendent, and future boards and future superintendents. I'd ask you not to take any, not to really shift the power, but maybe just work a little bit better at working together. In terms of public comment, I know there was a couple of different things put forth. I would ask that you not have public comment only at the beginning of the meeting. I think that the public does need to hear from you, hear presentations, and be able to speak to that during a meeting. I do like it being earlier, just because it gets to be late. In terms of having three members add things to the agenda, I'm going to echo the woman that spoke before, I think it just kind of, just knowing how full the agenda's been over the years.
You just thought, finished?
Okay, yes, I am. Knowing how full it was, I think it just, efficiency. I think you just won't get stuff done, unless you're willing to meet every week to get your agenda items covered, you're going to have a problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. One of my least favorite jobs is reminding people of the time. Please state your name and address.
Eric Newman, 85 Eastfield Drive. Fairfield hires the best and the brightest. When we had an opportunity to hire in 2010, Connecticut's Superintendent of the Year, Fairfield did it. Who is David Tittle? He got his bachelor's degree at Dartmouth College, he went then on, got his master's degree at UMass, but he got his doctorate in Educational Administration from Harvard University, went to top universities. Yet, you know, in past several years, his path has been shrinking his budget down, not being innovative and taking our school system to the next level, which we, at the time, we recruited him, was our mission. Let's take our school system to the next level, and now we have a board that wants to micromanage our superintendents and change bylaws so easily, you know, besides all his achievements. He's served as a chairman of the governor's early educational cabinet. These are great accomplishments, and I said, you know, Fairfield hires the best and the brightest, let's let him run our organization, run our school system, not microman, not be micromanaged by, at night, by a bunch of, you know, by elected officials, whose term might come and go, and be short-sightedness, think long-term. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Jill Vargas, 31 Pilgrim Lane. I'm going to read my letter that I wrote to you guys. Please do not support the proposed motion to amend the current BoE bylaws to significantly expand the members, to significantly expand the executive powers. With all due respect, I trust that Dr. Title has far more expertise and training to perform his duties as superintendent than the members of the Board of Ed. Currently, there is only one member who is a professional educator. I know you are all highly accomplished in your professional lives, but running a school district needs to be left to the experienced professional who was hired to do so. I have sat in the BoE budget meetings and listened. What's become clear to me is that the newest members still have some learning to do. I don't want important decisions, educational goals, and objectives that will affect my child's educational career to be made by people with little expertise in the education field. If our superintendent does not perform his duties satisfactorily, the Board can always choose not to renew his contract. I believe that ours is an exceptional superintendent, as do many members of the RTM, Republican and Democrat, as stated so at the May 5 RTM budget meeting. For those Board of Ed members who were in attendance, you heard so yourself. The proposed change is unsettling to me, and I feel it's a very bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Thasif Churik, 236 Fairfield Woods Road. Let's see, I have, I wasn't prepared to do this. I apologize if I'm, you know, rambling. I ask you to please not encroach upon the superintendent's responsibilities. We have a wonderful superintendent who has exceptional qualifications. Please be mindful of micromanaging the one person who is qualified to do this job. We need to try to work together as bodies to make our town school a better place. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address.
Julie Gottlieb, 153 Applegate Road. I'm not used to two minutes, so I had to write this down. I'm going to talk really fast to get through it. I sent a letter this afternoon, so I won't belabor the concerns I have over our moving critical key executive functions of the school system under the Board of Education, or the wisdom of that decision-making, being moved from someone whose job is to serve as the school board's CEO and educational leader to a board that is primarily composed of laypeople. Politics aside, which is where it should be, I'm especially concerned that the suggestions are coming from new members. I have been a new member on a town board myself. I would still consider myself to be a fairly new member, and it is extraordinarily difficult, if not impossible, to have a full, accurate picture only seven months into a four-year term. I believe that the proposed amendments are significant enough changes to require far more insight and experience from all, excuse me, before being introduced. Last week killed me. And if I could address the amendment regarding the two-thirds requirement to three people, it is tough to be in the minority. Believe me, I know that better than most. But that doesn't mean that I can propose changes to make that happen. I wish I could. Instead, I ask you once again to follow CAPE guidelines and build a collaborative relationship. Otherwise, your efforts for educational excellence will fail.
Thank you very much. Any other members of the public wish to address the board? Seeing nobody rise, thank you very much, and we'll move on to our business, which is discussion approval of the Board of Education bylaws. We have a recommended motion, which is to adopt the bylaws, and then we go through each of the amendments one at a time. We will not be voting them all en masse. So let me put the recommended motion, if you would, on the table, that the Board of Education bylaws be approved as amended. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber? Mrs. Maxon Canelli? Okay. The first enclosure that is with you, the current bylaws with the 112613 amendments, Mr. Fadabene had brought to our attention that we had made the changes, but we left out one sentence, and so that sentence has been added, and I think, Mr. Fadabene, you've looked at the bylaws and find that they were, it was added, the sentence that was missing that you were concerned about is now in there.
You're referring to the prior bylaws that were approved at the last organizational meeting in November that was not included in the December bylaws.
Some of the changes were, but not all of them.
There were two changes primarily to the bylaws. One change was included, one change was not. So that change in this current version, that was, I believe, handed out for this agenda, included that change, and that, you know, that change was, I forget where it was. It was in the...
There were a couple of changes, but yes.
Right, there were primarily two changes.
The point that I wanted to make is that the enclosure number one, which is dated May 15, 2014, includes the changes that were made at the November 26 meeting.
Right, it does now.
So that, now, so that you know that these are the current bylaws as of this moment. I just wanted to bring that to your attention because it was a prior conversation. The number-two enclosure is our first item to act on, and I think that's Mr. Fadabene's amendment.
Yeah, that's my amendment. So I'm not sure the correct procedure. Would this be an amendment to the motion now, or is this, we're going to do these individual motions to...
I think the motion is to amend the bylaws. I would just say to amend the bylaws and then reference the sheet.
Okay, just so we're clear, I guess.
Yeah, I think that, for all of you who have bylaws, I would suggest that you just simply say, I move to amend the bylaws as per Exhibit Two, enclosure Two, and then the board can second it, and we can have discussion. Does that seem fair?
Yeah, it'd really be, I guess, the main motion being divided to the individual motions that are going to be, are going to do. I just wanted to try and be clear. This first proposed amendment to the bylaws.
So you're putting the motion on the table?
I'm...
Moving to amend the bylaws as per enclosure Two. Do I have a second for that? Mrs. Gerber, so please make your comments on the motion.
I don't believe this amendment to the bylaws changes the roles and responsibility of the superintendent. I think it merely clarifies, as it says, that the responsibility of the agenda is that of the chairman, and the chairman shall consider the recommendations of the superintendent and confer with the vice chairman and secretary. What's really substantially different is that the chairman will confer with the vice chairman and secretary, and that is merely an effort to have a second and third pair of eyes looking at the agenda before it's presented to the full board, and just among the executive individuals to have some comment before it gets put out to the rest of the board, whether it's to make changes, clarifications, or just prevent inadvertent errors. It's just another set of eyes, in my opinion. So I don't think it necessarily changes anything, but sort of makes it, hopefully, for the board, able to do a better job in putting out the agendas and therefore avoid having to relook at agendas when things come out, maybe that weren't quite right or should have been looked at a little closer, and it just adds another level of trying effort to be a little, a little more accurate and clear with the agendas.
Mrs. Gerber, as the second, do you have any comments? As the chair, when Mr. Fadabene suggested this as an amendment last fall, although we have not made it officially part of these bylaws, I started practicing that way, and as Mr. Fadabene and Mrs. Gerber would acknowledge, since last fall, I've been sending them a copy of the agenda. The agenda is formulated over several days, and so generally around Tuesday night or even Wednesday morning, they'll get an email, and because you get it on Thursday, we ask them to respond fairly quickly, and they have responded on a timely basis. So I have no objection to this as a bylaw amendment. Other discussion that people have. Mrs. Lou McCormick, followed by Mr. Confortito.
I also do want to say that I tried to research this a little bit to see what other districts did, and other districts do have a variety of different processes, including other individuals in the process of setting the agenda is actually very common, and so this is not anything that should be considered unusual from how agendas are set. So I'm supportive of something like this, yeah.
Mr. Confortito.
Currently, the agenda is set by the CEO or by the chair?
By the chair.
In conference with the CEO? The new amendment doesn't mention the CEO at all.
We shall consider the recommendations of the superintendent, which essentially, for... Can I comment on your question?
Sure.
Okay. So, and for the public's viewpoint, each August, the superintendent and I sit down and look at what items that are coming before the board in the next calendar year, and I publish a list of, here's the items that are going to be kind of on each calendar. There are some items that don't get calendared because we're not sure exactly when the materials will be ready, when the presentation will be ready, and then there are also items that are coming before us that the State Board of Education sends us a memo on, so we have to slip those in as well. So there's kind of a broad picture of the year, and then the week in between meetings, Dr. Title and I will confer, and then Meg will, Mrs. Brown will send out a draft agenda to me. I'll take a look at it to see if it incorporated the thoughts that I had and that the thoughts that Dr. Title had. If there are any changes, I make those changes, and then that draft is sent to Mr. Fadabene and Mrs. Gerber, and then it's finalized. I'm the one that makes the final decision, but it includes the recommendations and advice of the superintendent in conferring with, and that's the process I've used currently.
Okay. Through the chair to Mr. Fadabene. Is it your opinion that this is simply formalizing what is already common practice?
As of the recent past, after I proposed it, yes.
Yes, yes. Current practice. Other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, are we ready to act? And the motion is to amend the bylaws per enclosure number two, and so you'll see the bold is the changed language. Any questions on what we're voting on? If not, all in favor, raise your hands. Unanimous. Item number, enclosure number three is actually a recommendation that I've made, and so I'll make the motion and ask for a second. And so I move to amend the bylaws as per enclosure number three. Is there a second? Mrs. Gerber. In the past, this board has had public comment at the beginning, and in the last five or six years, it's had public comment at the end. As I went around to different PTA meetings, and I went door-to-door, probably the most common comment I got was, so for my two minutes of fame, I have to wait till 10:30 at night in order to make a comment on non-agenda items. This board has always, not always, that's a long time, this board has always had an allowance for public comment just prior to a voting item. And so we've always had two opportunities for public comment, one at a voting item and then the other at the end of a meeting. And so this, in my mind, maintains the same level of public input. It just means that you get to give the public input at the beginning of the meeting on non-agenda items, and then you get to go home to your family while we continue to trudge through minutes and whatnot. The other thing is that change principally is that we always have presentations, not always, but frequently have presentations from different professional groups, and when the current order of business showed the student presentations following general presentations, that meant sometimes the students were sitting here for an hour before they got on the agenda, and you know that currently I've been kind of asking for unanimous consent to allow the students to go first because they're, you know, they don't take that much time. So this new order of business puts the student reports up front, followed by public comment, and then presentations. And then it also eliminates open board comment at the end of the meeting. I think there's enough time for board members to make comments throughout on business items, and sometimes some comments start opening up conversation on business that is a conversation that, since it was not noticed, is, would be considered improper, and so I think there's enough opportunity for board members to comment, both at meetings and in meetings directly with the superintendent. Each of you can go in and speak with him on any topic whenever you wish. So that's the intent. Those are the three changes that are covered by enclosure number three. Does the second have a comment? Comments from other board members? Mr. Fadabene?
I guess I'd like to make a motion to amend that amendment to include open board comment prior to adjournment. Because I still believe open board comment...
Let me get a second first.
Second? I can still.
All right. No, I mean, the procedure generally is to make sure the motion's on the table. Now, one other clarifying procedure, if I can, just for a moment. Robert's rules allow an amendment and then an amendment to the amendment, but it doesn't allow a third amendment to the amendment to the amendment because that's too many bouncing balls, and so we'll act on this amendment, and if some other board member has another change they wish to make, wait until this action item is acted on and then introduce your idea. So with that as clarifying for the future, Mr. Fadabene?
Yeah, no, I think that open board comment, in the past, I think, in many cases, has been constructive, as well as I agree with the chair, there have been times when it has not been that constructive, and certain things were discussed that may be not appropriate, but when that is the case, I believe it would be the chair's responsibility to sort of control that. But there is a function that I think open board comment has, in which case one can generally discuss issues or things that happen within a district that they want to make the other board members aware of, where they may not ordinarily be able to because they're not on the agenda and not a discussion, and they're not raised to a level of a voting item at all, but there are things in which that the, that a member may want the whole board to be praised of. And that's really the only opportunity that one can discuss things with the whole board, is at a public meeting and not individually. So I think it has a useful purpose, and when used properly, would benefit the district, and one in which I would think should be still included within the agenda items.
Ms. Carnell?
I'm sorry, you were next, or was... I don't know.
You wish to speak.
Right, but do I have to follow on what he was saying, or may I bring up a different...
No, any, well, you can't make another amendment.
I don't want to.
Okay, so, but you certainly can make a comment.
I have a question. You forgot to add that one. So on your proposed amendment, on number five, you say presentations. Often, or at times, we've had internal by the administration, or external when, for example, someone from Aon or other people come. I would like that separated and maybe put in different sequence on the, on our agenda. I don't think they should be bunched all together.
If I can respond, we have had internal and external presentations. It is rare for us to actually have both of them on the same night because generally presentations eat up about an hour of our time, and to have two presentations in a single meeting is a very rare circumstance, and so I'm not sure that showing them as two distinct, different events has a practical, any practical change. But I understand what you're saying, but, you know, it's generally, we only have one presentation a night.
I think that's exactly the reason. When we get two presentations, it becomes a little overwhelming, and we have had it. So...
Can I just raise a point of order in the sense that is this germane to the amendment to the amendment?
No, but thank you for pointing that out. Any other comments on the amendment to the amendment which is concerning open board comment? Mr. Pass... Mr. Patton? And then Mr. Llewellyn?
More of a question to the chair. If we remove open board comment there and don't replace it anywhere else, in your opinion, what other opportunities would board members have to bring up subjects that are not specifically on the agenda at a public meeting?
I would say there are probably two specific, I'll say, general times. The superintendent's report, where he covers a myriad of projects of items, is a time board members can chat about items that are in the ballpark of what he's talked about. We also have committee and liaison reports that frequently create issues that a board member could comment on. You know, and so those would probably be two, but, you know...
And obviously, this wouldn't affect personal privilege moments or anything like that, which are often done in open board comment.
Yeah, I mean, I think all legislative bodies have kind of moments of personal privilege that you give to a member for a particular reason. You know, it's available. It doesn't get used every meeting, but it's available, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Llewellyn?
I actually think we should keep the open board comment because, you know, from what I'm hearing from the public and what I've heard you say in the past, three members cannot get something on the agenda. So it truly is actually the only time that a board member can speak. I'd like to provide an example of what you just said about the ability to use these superintendent's... What is it? The superintendent's report to ask questions that are germane. You know, that hasn't been the practice here. As he's done financial updates, questions have been asked about financial updates on food service hypothetically, or something that was not there hypothetically. And folks have been called out of order and said it's not on the agenda, but it might get on the agenda. So I actually do think we need to allow the board members an opportunity to bring up other items and not continue to be censored.
Can I respond to that, or... I wouldn't make the distinction that Mr. Llewellyn is talking about is if an individual board member wishes to make a comment during the superintendent's report by hypothetical example on the food service. I didn't... I don't believe I called that out of order. I called out of order to have a full board discussion on that item that had not been put on the agenda as advance notice. And so individual comments are one thing. A comment that encourages or suggests that we should start discussion on an item that has not been agended would be a violation of FOI. So I've made that distinction, if you will, that unless the agenda has an item on it, we would have to vote by a supermajority to add an item for discussion. But certainly, just a board member making a comment about something would not be prevented, I think. It's when you've... When you've said, can I ask questions and can I have further discussion and can the board discuss? And in that particular instance, I said, no, but how about if we put it on the next Tuesday's agenda, which we did? So I would only make that subtle distinction.
And I guess it... We can agree to disagree and stop the back and forth. I guess it depends which seat you're sitting in.
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Confortito? And then Ms. Carnell?
Through the chair to Mr. Fadabean. Open board comment, do you define a more comment to mean any open board comment? We've never defined... The reason I'm asking is we've never defined it. But we have had issues in the past, and I wonder if there's some middle ground there. Maybe there's not. I don't want to stipulate.
I think that open board comment has a long history on this board. And it has served a purpose for this board. And when used properly, I think it's beneficial. So I think in the event that it isn't used properly or to accommodate some other disruptive agenda, then that's the role of the chair to take control of that and maybe say that's not necessarily appropriate for an open board comment. But I think in general, it has worked in the past, and I'm reluctant to change it because I think it has a beneficial purpose for the board, and not just this board, but boards in the past and maybe boards in the future. So I think it serves a useful purpose and shouldn't be changed just for any temporary reason.
Ms. Carnell? I'm sorry, you still have the floor.
That being said, and you said it's been used improperly, what would be an improper use of open board comment?
You're addressing that to Mr. Fadabean?
Yeah.
Certain discussions of personnel matters?
I guess, and again, through the chair, the reason I'm asking the question is I'm reluctant to... I mean, I'm an elected official, and if I want to say something at a meeting, okay, that's not on the agenda, that's not disrespectful to the process, I think I should have an opportunity to say that. Whether it's about an upcoming, you know, band event or swim meet or, you know, we've mentioned that we are going to bring up this item, is there any indication from the chair when that might occur? I think if it's used in a respectful manner and... I would rather take the chance of leaving it in there and asking people to use it in a respectful manner with a constructive purpose rather than eliminate it. Because some people have a tendency either to take potshots or to get carried away with it. I think, you know, freedom of speech is freedom of speech. Once in a while, you're going to get somebody who says something you don't like.
Ms... No, I'm sorry. Which order did I have it in? Ms. Carnell and then Mrs. Lou McCormick?
I wanted to continue with what Mr. Confortito said. We do have freedom of speech. We do open up public comment to town. And I think the board should have open public comment as well. And I believe, if I heard you correctly, that you had said, we can reach out to Dr. Tidal if we wish. And I agree. But however, maybe the board wants to bring it out with the other eight members. And I think it would be very time consuming for Dr. Tidal to have to address each of us individually.
Mrs. Lou McCormick?
And as mentioned, I had taken a look at several numerous other districts to see what is common versus not common in practice. And just about every district I've seen has an open board comment. So for us to veer from that would be unusual.
Other comment, Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli?
I guess the problem I have is that in the two and a half years that I've been on the board, I've seen open board comment abused as much as I've seen it respected. Despite specific explicit mentions to board members, among which are, it is not meant to be directed to the superintendent. It is not meant to be questions directed to staff. That is not ever the purpose of open board comment, and yet it is happening more often than it is not. I also love the tradition of open board comment. It's when I get my Odyssey of the Mind plugs in, we get to mention other, you know, great events in town. And I enjoy it for that. But if something's been abused too much, I mean, you tell any child, you take the toy away. And I don't like watching staff members and our CEO be put on the spot. I do think that there are enough other moments in... I wouldn't hesitate to take a moment of personal privilege to mention my little side job. I wouldn't hesitate to use a superintendent's report for additional query. I wouldn't hesitate to use committee liaison reports with my peers here at the board to question further about different projects or different things going on in town. And anything that doesn't fit into those categories doesn't belong at the board table. So that is... While I completely respect what Mr. Fadabean is saying, that this has a long history and long support, and I respect Mrs. Lou McCormick's point that other towns do have it, I've just, again, in two and a half years, seen it abused. And I think maybe that's a signal.
Other comment? I have one final comment, but Mr. Patton?
No, I'll just be quick and echo Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli's statement, is that if we could get, you know, even some kind of sense of the body that, you know, we will agree to, you know, those things that she said where, you know, we will not use public comment or open board comment to call out to any member of the staff or any board member or, you know, any specific person and just use it to bring up issues as a matter of fact as, you know, a point of... Odyssey of the Mind. No, besides Odyssey of the Mind, Jen. Then I would support, you know, keeping it. But otherwise, I, you know, I'm getting tired of seeing with this board and previous boards of time being wasted and people being inconsiderate, I guess is the word I'll use, towards other people in... On staff and in the community.
Other final comments from board members? You know, one of the problems in society today is the word trust isn't valued as much as it has in the past. I think any chair that I've watched over the years has allowed latitude on a variety of matters and in using points of personal privilege or using a topic that is in the agenda in one place, as Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli mentioned, there's several locations. So I don't see it as an infringement on board members' ability to chat, but I do think it's a more efficient way to run a meeting. Other final comments that board members wish to make? If not, Mr. Confortito?
I really got to... I have... And maybe it's because I'm a lawyer. I really have a problem with eliminating board comment, okay? And I understand that it may have been abused in the past, and I get that, okay? That being said, okay? Simply because somebody abuses a privilege doesn't mean that I should lose mine. So it is my hope that this board won't abuse the privilege. I'm going to vote for the amendment. But if it doesn't change, then by a two-thirds majority, and I think I'll probably get that, I can bring it back up to have it changed. So I'm hoping that this discussion will allow people to understand that all the board members don't like some of the things that have occurred and that we can move forward in a constructive manner. But I will be voting in favor of this amendment.
Any other final comments? Mr. Fadabean, you wish to make any final comment as the maker of the motion? Oh, no, I made the motion. You made the amendment, yes.
You made the motion, I made the amendment.
Any final comments you wish to make, or shall we go directly to vote on the amendment?
No, I think that everything's been said.
So the amendment is to add item number 11, open board comment, and then adjournment becomes item number 12. Is that more or less the motion you have? Basically, yes. Any clarification needed from the board members? All in favor of the amendment to the amendment, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Confortito, Mrs. Carnell, Mr. Fadabean, Mr. Llewellyn, Mr. Patton, all opposed? Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Maxon Cunnelli? The motion passes six to three on the amendment. So we're back to the original amendment, which is the order of business as outlined with the addition of open board comment after committee liaison reports, followed by adjournment. Any further questions on the amendment? Mrs. Lou McCormick, did you have your hand raised? Mr. Fadabean, followed by Ms. Carnell?
We're talking about the amendment or we're talking about... Is there another amendment out there?
No, there's no... Right now, the amendment that is out there...
Is now embedded.
Is... The open board comment is embedded in that, yes.
Okay. So I'd like to make another amendment to the order. And I think this is in response to, again, the public and making sure that we have good communication, because often what happens...
Can you make the motion so that we can then have the debate?
So the motion would be to include a public comment at the end of the session. So that would be...
Where? If you think of it as items 10, open board comment is now 11, adjournment is 12, where would you put it?
So prior to open board comment. So that would be 10. As 11. And then open board comment would be 12. And then adjournment would be 13.
I second the amendment. Second to that, Mr. Llewellyn. Now make your argument.
And I guess, to go along with that, by allowing this second open board comment, I would also then want to limit the first public comment to, say, I don't know, like, say, 15 minutes or the first... Yeah, say 15 minutes of the first seven speakers. So that people who can't speak at the end of the session have the opportunity to come up, and perhaps we give privilege to students who may not otherwise be able to attend until 11:00 PM or 12:00, as they've run so long. And then it also provides the audience with an opportunity to hear the discussion that has taken place during the meeting and process that and then be able to give feedback following that. I think it's very important to provide both of those, and I understand we have a limited amount of time, which I would say would then result in limiting the initial public comment to a certain number of minutes and then allowing open comment at the end.
Wasn't it... Yeah, Mr. Llewellyn, followed by Ms. Carnell, and then Mr. Confortito?
Thank you. I think that actually it's important for the public to be able to comment on what's going on during... What has transpired during that meeting, because that's when it's relevant in people's minds. So, you know, I fully support allowing people to speak both at the beginning and at the end.
Ms. Carnell? Different matter, thank you. Mr. Confortito?
I wouldn't be in favor of that amendment. If that's going to be the amendment, then I would say leave public comment as it was in the original agenda. The purpose of moving public comment up was so that people would have a chance not to have to sit through three hours of us bickering, okay? And get their points in early in the evening, so they can go home and have a beer and sit in front of a Yankee game.
They go home and watch us on Channel 78.
And it's not a matter of two bites at the apple or anything else, it's a matter of efficiency. Anything that's discussed after public comment, okay, down on the agenda, the only thing that would be voting on were things that were pre-talked at previous meetings, okay? So that they would have the chance to comment on that before we voted on it and/or at the time we go to vote on it under old business. New business could be brought up under a public comment at the next meeting. So I don't see a need to lengthen the agenda for that purpose. I mean, if you look at other... I mean, you look at Westport's agenda, public comment's 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting, and that's it.
Mr. Llewellyn, if I can comment on your comment. When I did go around, the reason I put it up front is that there were people who said, no, I'd rather talk at the end of the meeting. But they were the minority. So I then went out to cave and asked 18 different superintendents or board chairs what their practice has been. I didn't find a single board that had three opportunities for public comment. We're one of only five boards that actually allow the public to comment prior to the vote. And so actually, our board, by having two public comment periods, is ahead of most boards. Most boards do... One board, I won't mention Darian's name, doesn't have any public comment. And so depending on the board that you're talking about, most have two opportunities. Most do it at the beginning of the meeting so that the public can go home and watch us on Channel 78. So that's the survey I did to kind of move it up front. Mr. Llewellyn?
Through the chair to Mr. Confortito. I also think one way to address your concern is if we keep it the way it is, where the public is allowed one open comment, so to speak. They can't... In other words, you can't speak at the beginning and at the end. You should not have more speakers now or more time than you otherwise. You probably would have more by moving them forward, but at the end, you'll have those who want to save their comments for the end to be able to speak. And you've got a finite group of people.
Any further conversation on the amendment to the amendment? Mr. Patton first and Mr. Fadabean?
I think my comments are both more towards the open ocean and the amendment to the amendment.
Well, limited to the amendment to the amendment.
I'll...
Adding a third...
I will... No, no, I will... Right, I will not add another subject if that's what you're asking. I don't believe...
I don't believe that we should have, again, I think it's unproductive to have kind of three bites at the apple. The question, again, would be, is it more efficient, or does the public, you know, have a larger desire to speak earlier, or would they rather reserve final comment to 10:30 at night, which has been, in general, the, you know, what we've done at least in this past year? So my question is more towards comments before or after presentations, but I guess we can always make a quick motion to move items around if we have presenters that need to speak beforehand, or we feel it's a major issue where public comment might want to be made after a presentation?
Yeah.
I guess I'm asking the chair to that.
The reason I put it this way, with the exception of the budget meetings, and during the budget meetings, we generally don't invite presenters in, okay? So with the exception of that, the number of speakers that speak is kind of predictable. The topics vary, the people vary, but the number who actually come here to speak on non-agenda items is fairly predictable, and so I think that we can tell presenters, we have public comment, here's when you, we can expect you to be on the agenda. If at that meeting, suddenly we find that, you know, the room is full and we know that there's three dozen people who want to speak, well, then we, as a board, I think we can make that adjustment, as Mr. Patton suggests, at the time, but, you know, in terms of moving things around, if that's what is required.
And likewise, if, let's say it's a really packed agenda, we can also, nobody wants to do this, but that's, that would be the nature of moving it to the front of the meeting, is that we would possibly have to limit public comment to a certain amount of time, or one minute, or 30 seconds, or whatever it is, correct?
The bylaws do allow the chair to limit public comment for the efficient and orderly operation of the meeting, and so from time to time, I've exercised that responsibility and have been the unpopular person in the room with, I'll say, half the room who didn't like the decision, and the other half that said, "Yeah, let's get on with the meeting." So, but yes, the chair does have that latitude to be able to adjust, as the moderator of the RTM does. You know, you saw the night where, okay, it was a two-minute comment and a one-minute comment, and then pretty soon, can you do this in 15 seconds comment? So, you know, you try and manage the meeting from that perspective, and I think the, all of the chairs of the Fairfield Town Boards have that ability to kind of moderate things in order to allow the public to speak, but for us to be able to do our business. Do you have another comment or question? If not, Mr. Fattabean. Is that the last speaker, or is there somebody else that wishes? Ms. Carnell?
Well, I guess anyone that knows me, I've been always an advocate of public comment and input, so I would be in favor of this. I think it's really up to the chair, in essence, to limit public comment for the purpose he indicated, which is keep an orderly meeting. That's not to say you don't have any, you can have public comment and yet keep it orderly. I don't think we've been excessively overrun with public comment. It seems, in my opinion, that the audience has decreased over the years, in the public, more so it increased, so I don't think we're in risk of having too many members of the public out here at our meetings. I think it encourages people to come to the meetings, but to feel like they have some sort of input and some sort of ability to say something, other than just listen, which can be very frustrating if you have gone to Board of Ed meetings in the past as one of the audience. So I think it can be controlled, I think it's beneficial, I think there's really different purposes for having it at the beginning and the end, and if people remember, the prior bylaws did have public comment before and after, and that was changed. So there was a precedent in town to have that, and it had worked for a number of years. I think that people talk in the beginning, talk about different things than people talk at the end. You certainly should have the ability for the chair to control repetitiveness in comments, possibly, but I think you'd avoid that. But I do think it's beneficial. I think oftentimes, public has, they have things to say that are worth considering, thinking about, and they should have the freedom to address it within limits, and that should be controlled by the chair.
Ms. Carnell?
I think the public comment is very important. I think, I think we should give the public an opportunity to do it twice through a meeting. I think some people prefer to do it earlier, some may prefer to do it later. I think that's why everybody should have the opportunity. I know the public speaks, gets their point across by emails or websites, but I think it's really important to have the direct public comment.
And I remind the board that we, this does not change the two times during a meeting, because although it does not say it in here, it does say it in our bylaws, that the public may comment on items that are up for vote, so the, all regular meetings will have two opportunities to speak. Mr. Confortito, have you got the final word, or?
I don't know if I got the final word or not.
Mr. Confortito, followed by-
I got the mic. And again, I don't want this to come across as sounding disrespectful to the public, because I'm always, you know, welcome public comment. Board of Ed meetings are not public meetings, they are meetings held in public, and if constituents want to reach out to me, they know how to get to me, there's an opportunity to speak at the beginning of the meeting, there's an opportunity to speak for any item that this board votes upon. I think that's plenty of time for public comment. This board has to get to a point where we can run an efficient meeting, and I think this is one step towards doing that.
No other further, no, Mr. Patton did want to make a final comment, a final comment, right?
Yeah, and it is, it is a comment. I also just wanted to obviously remind the board, and I guess the public as well, that as we've done in the past, just because we're changing, or if we change, move public comment up toward the front of the meeting, it doesn't mean that we can't make a motion and change the order of the agenda, which has been done on many occasions. So if there's a need, for whatever reason, where, you know, there's an outcry of the public in general, you know, we get 1,000 emails for something that they really want to speak and wait till the end of a meeting, I'm sure that the board, you know, would be amenable to a motion to change the order of the agenda.
If there are no further votes, now, this is a motion on the amendment to the amendment, and that is adding what essentially would now be item number 11, public comment, and then committee liaison reports would be-
No, open board comment would be 12, adjournment 13.
Yes, open board comment would then become 12, and adjournment would become 13. Is everybody clear on that? Those in favor of the amendment of adding essentially the third period of public comment, please raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Fattabean, Mr. Llewellyn, opposed. Mr. Confortito, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Maxine Cunelli, Mr. Patton. That motion fails four to five. So we're back to the main amendment, which has been changed to have open board comment in as number 11, and adjournment as number 12. Any other discussion on this? Mr. Fattabean?
This proposed order has approval amendments later on in the meeting, as well as the superintendent's report later in the meeting, as well as committee liaison reports. Roberts rules usually prefer the approval amendments to be done at the beginning of the meeting, as well as committee reports, and so I don't necessarily agree with that order and probably can't support that, or those things coming sort of contrary to what Roberts rules would suggest, and contrary to many, almost every other business practice or business meeting where you have the approval amendments early, as well as committee reports. And also, I think the superintendent's report coming towards the end is not beneficial, because a lot of times, the superintendent's report has information that may affect both our old business and new business decisions. So I would prefer to hear the superintendent's report as to what's going on before we make decisions on old and new business. So I would, I have a problem with that order as well, so I can't support this main motion.
Yeah, the, putting those, I'll say, three administrative matters at the end was really, from my perspective, trying to get those items that the public has a particular interest in, which is our presentations, our public comments on those, and then the old and new business that are often voting items, to therefore have those to have precedence. So that's the only reason that they were, they were put that way. I think it's a very, very, very rare circumstance where the superintendent has an item as part of his superintendent's report that relates to a business item. Generally, he makes his comments about that business item at the time of the business item, and the superintendent's report is to cover items that are, do not relate to the agenda, so I'm not sure that that's, you know, I just think that's the normal course of our, of his, of what he reports on. Other comments from board members? Any other amendments to the amendment? Hearing none, are we ready to act?
Actually, I have one.
Yes, please.
I wanted to also, because your motion and Ms. Carnell's are so similar, they're basically the same, and it's kind of like we're going through them. One item that I think is relevant for discussion, and this comes back to bringing agenda items on, is that I have seen it in other districts where, before the close of each meeting, there's actually a moment where Board of Ed members can request future items be placed on the agenda. And so it's open, there's no email exchange, there's no, like, oftentimes, as we've noted, when items have been brought up to be placed on future agenda, it sometimes can get lost, or the list gets very long. By doing it this way, items are discussed, and they're decided that they will be put on the next agenda, or on which agenda, and it becomes very clear, the process becomes very organized, as opposed to running a, you know, a 15-long running list.
Yeah, I assume the board members understand that during open board comment, now that it's back in there, certainly a board member could say, "And I'd like this item on an agenda at some point in the future." But I think board members know that that's, you know, that would be one of the things that you could say during open board comment. The concern I would have about an item that says it's the majority of the board, two weeks in advance of a meeting, that is, what, deciding by majority vote what that agenda is going to look like, and agendas are a little bit more dynamic than that, and so I'm not sure that that would lead to a very efficient and orderly board meeting to do it that way.
Point of order, Mr. Chair? I don't believe we had an amendment.
So I would only make a comment on that.
I don't believe there's been a motion for an amendment or second.
No, no, but I'm just answering a question.
So the discussion taking place before the amendment is made.
So therefore, do you wish to make that as a motion, or not?
Yeah, I would like to make it as a motion to add that item.
So again, reference the number that you'd like and move everything else down.
So that one would be before the open board comment, same place as before, where we, I had placed the public comment, so that would be item number 11.
So that would be the new item number 11, moving open board comment to 12 and adjournment to 13.
Correct, so there would be a brief, and so the motion would be to place future business, it's referred to in other districts, the discussion of future business, where we officially say, "Are there any agenda items that board members would like to place on the next meeting or in a future meeting?" And then we would go around, everyone would have the right to voice one agenda item.
Discussion of future business is the title.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Future business.
Okay, just future business is the title.
That was, that was how they titled it, future business.
In what number?
Give me the exact amendment.
Future business, to add future business-
To add future business as a title.
As item 11.
As item?
Between what one? Between committee liaison report and open board comment.
Correct.
Number 11.
As 11, which changes open board comment to 12 and adjournment to 13.
Correct.
Secretary clear on that?
Yes.
Okay.
And I was just trying to clarify what future business meant.
Wait a second, so I have that motion to add future business, and do I have a second? Mr. Llewellyn, do you wish to make your further comments on that as, on your amendment?
When I was at the CAE session, when we went through training, one of the points that, you know, I made was to go around and talk with many different district members to understand how they were able to place agenda items on their next meeting, or the future meeting, and it was interesting that most of them looked at me very quizzically and said, "Why do you ask? It's discussed at our board meetings, and we agree upon it." And I was, they're like, "Don't, isn't that how you do it?" And my response was, "No, that is not how we do it." And so I found that many instances, this is kind of an orderly fashion, that many districts use this methodology to kind of publicly discuss what the agenda items are, and it's also nice, because the public can hear what the topics of interest are that the various board members have, and then we can kind of order, everyone kind of knows in advance what we need to plan for in the future. So I think it's a very constructive way to publicly discuss the topics of interest, and if we do it over time, there shouldn't be a backlog. I think people will have items pop up sporadically that they're interested in placing on the agenda, but because we've never had this practice before, I could see that it would be, you know, very interesting to hear everybody's comments, what they would be interested in hearing, but in either case, the topic is future business, so that everyone is on the same page as to what everyone's thinking and where we want to go.
Mr. Llewellyn, you seconded the motion?
Actually, I think the idea of being able to have a discussion over that is a good one as well. I was up at a CES meeting a few weeks back and spoke to a number of different board members from different districts, and each of them had the ability to add something to the agenda with three board members' request. So this is not dissimilar to what'll be coming forward, but as opposed to, you know, three board members making that request, we can at least have a discussion over it. So I think it is a good compromise.
Any other comments that people wish to make? Mr., Mrs. Maxine Cunelli, and then Mr. Confortito.
Through the chair to Mr. Lou McCormick, one thing I'm curious about in your conversations, when things came up as a future business item that a board mentioned, mentioned, was that a dictate to the future agenda, that because one member brought it up as part of that aspect of the agenda, it was then a committed item?
No, just because one person brings it up doesn't mean it's a committed item. Actually, what would happen is that, well, you know, I think different districts do it different ways, but the number three comes up very frequently, where if two other members say, "I support that, I support that," then it makes the list. If only one person is interested in it, and the rest of them are saying, "Whoa, no, not of interest," yeah, then it doesn't make it. So usually, the norm seems to be the three. The three magic number, I think, comes from the statutes, because three members can basically call a special meeting if they have a common interest. So I think the number three is used very frequently, but rather than go to the special meeting formality, instead, they implement this, which is kind of a nice, more public, more civil way to do it, that's in front, and everyone can kind of just say yes, no, and it kind of should go quickly, because not everybody's going to have a topic they want to add.
Yeah, just as a follow-up comment, my only concern about that is I agree with what Mr. Confortito had said about wanting to make our meetings more efficient, I think, and we have done that in the past, I mean, we've had a number of items that have come up before us, where, you know, we have voiced that idea, we'd like to see this come up again, and I do think that's an important part of our responsibility. But again, we do have open board comment there to do that, so I'm a little bit torn on adding something. I mean, I would never tell a student to, that redundancy is a good quality in a powerful document, and so that would be my hesitation, but again, only because I do feel free that we're already doing that, so that's my hesitation.
Can I respond to that?
Listen, let her finish the comment first.
Oh, I thought she was done.
She's done, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought she was done. So in my response to that, the difference is, is that in open comment, we basically can say, but there is no response and there's no action. So that is the same as one person voicing the interest in the agenda item, but it never necessarily making it, because there's no understanding of whether other board members are interested as well. What this does is it clarifies it and says, yes, this, and what we can do is, the chair can actually limit conversation or discussion on a topic. The topics can just be raised, explained by the speaker, and that's it, and then people vote whether they want to discuss that topic further or not, and keep it very clean.
If I can comment, when I have tried to limit board members from commenting, it has not been a very popular thing, just as when I've had to call the two-minute rule with members of the public. Mr., who was next?
But can I respond to that?
Yeah.
We can just create that as part of, that is the rule of how we will operate.
It was, Mr. Confortito, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Excuse me, I'm unclear on the amendment. Are we adding future business as a line item, and then there is discussion on future business and a vote as to what the future business will be, or are we just putting it in there so that board members can say, "I'd like to see this come up sometime in the future"? I'm unclear on the amendment. I'm unclear on the amendment.
Through the chair to Mrs. Lou McCormick.
Okay. So again, the item would be referred to as future business, and this is where a board member may request for a future agenda item, and it would need to be confirmed or approved by at least two other board members at that time. And as defined as our discussion, we would not permit discussion on the topic. It would be explained once by the, by the recommender, and then that would be it, we would vote.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Convetito?
Yes.
Okay. Other comments from board members on this addition? Mr. Luellen?
Just, just one comment. In terms of how it's papered on here, be future business, would we need a parenthetical saying requiring three votes, or does that get taken care of some other way so we're clear on that in future meetings?
There is no, at the moment, within the amendment, there is no definition of future business, others, other than Mrs. Lou McCormick's.
Would you like me to define it? I have a definition here.
Other than Mrs. Lou McCormick's commentary, and so it would.
Okay, then I, I shall change the name or add to that. So, "Future business dash, board of ed member may request future agenda item requiring three votes."
For acceptance? Or for action?
Yeah, for action.
I'm gonna, I won't write it down. I'll wait for the secretary to make sure she confirms. That would make that particular bit, line item, a paragraph as opposed to just a title, but I'm sure that Mrs. Brown could find some way to, to structure that. Let me, let me make sure that Mrs. Gerber has it, and then Mr. Convetito.
So it'd be, "Future business dash, a board of ed member may request a future agenda item requiring two other members' votes."
That's fine. Or requiring three votes, just in total.
For acceptance?
For, right, for action.
Got it?
Okay.
Mr. Convetito.
Two issues. Don't we have a motion here that says any, that to be voted on, that any three members? I mean, isn't there?
There is a separate motion that deals with that as an issue, yes.
Okay, then I would ask that that motion be ruled out of order because it's amending the order of the meeting, okay? And what it's really doing is shoehorning in the other amendment, which should be entitled under the agenda being set. It, it seems to be two separate items, okay? If the board wishes to vote in that three-item thing, then I see no need for there to be any line item for future board business.
I, I think Mr. Convetito is correct. There is a motion pending that will be offered that deals with the same issue. Is, is it acceptable to you to deal with it when it comes up on the order of business tonight?
It's, it is, so long as it's, we place it inside the order of the meetings, of the meeting. So the other one doesn't, does it specifically designate a location for when that can occur? Or is it just informal? This would occur at every meeting. And, and I guess the reason I was bringing it up is because Ms. Carnell's item also directly overlapped with this.
So, so unless.
Sure, how you were.
So I, I don't know how to answer your question for you, unless you wish to withdraw your motion, and if you do not, then we will act on it and then deal with the other one when we get to it as well. Because there are, Mr. Convetito, I think, two different issues at, at play here. One is that the motion that you're referring to says that three members can request, they don't have to do that at a meeting, they don't have to do that in public, they can just send an email in making a request. I think Mrs. Lou McCormick's motion is saying, "And we would like to make that process embedded in the regular meeting agenda." Yes, they're very similar in intent, but they're a little bit different. So I think I would, I wouldn't rule her motion out of order per se unless she wanted to withdraw it, and then I would say, "Let's just act on it and then act on the other matter separately." Any other comments from board members? Mr. Fattabene?
I think that the section we're amending right now is just entitled "Order of Business." And it's a simple list of what the agenda's going to look like and what's on the agenda, not the specific subject matter items. So I can understand adding a line item or a title for new business, whatever that new business might be, which is somehow distinct from, I mean, future business, which is somehow distinct from new business. And future business, I assume, is more speculative or more concept-oriented, whereas new business would be things that weren't on the prior agenda, would have to be acted on that night. So I don't know if that's the right place to include the how it gets on the agenda. The how it gets on the agenda is addressed elsewhere in our bylaws. So this is just an order of the business. So I can understand and could possibly support just a new business, a new, or a future business agenda item. So we generally discuss future business, the belief being there'd be no real voting item, but the discussion is what new business is coming up or what future business is, is occurring. As a heads up, I would equate it to. And that may be reasonable, I guess, so that, you know, we have some board discussion prior to it actually being on the agenda. But I don't know if I would, at this location, support the requirement that, you know, you can add something to the agenda. It just seems an improper place in our, in the bylaw to put it. You may be put it somewhere else.
Okay, I'll take that friendly amendment. That's fine. I said, "I'll take that friendly amendment and we can address the process of determining."
I don't know what you mean by.
Well, I'll let him make the amendment to the amendment.
No, no, we can't do that. We're, I'm not sure what Mr. Fattabene is suggesting, to not have the description in there and just have the title. I'm not sure what your descrip, you're, you're, you're at the moment not suggesting anything you're commenting.
All right, I wasn't clear, I guess. I was, I was, I guess my comment is that the section for order of business is just a list of agenda items that are going to be in the agenda of every regular meeting. So if it fits within that pattern, what one would expect in an order of business, it would simply be a line item, "Future business." So you would discuss something about future business, not knowing exactly what it is, but something that's going to occur in the future presumably, and not necessarily be acted on that, at that night. My guess is there'd be no real voting items in that agenda item, but a discussion. And there may be subject matter things to discuss, I don't know. That's up for the chair and the superintendent to put on the agenda. But there's an item there that we would have on the agenda at every regular meeting. So I, I don't, just as a procedure, in that section, order of business, it just seems not the right location in the bylaws to place how things get on the agenda. There'd be nowhere else in that section.
You're making a comment, you're not making any suggestion, you're just making your comment.
I'm making my comment, and, and the mover has the option to do what the mover wants with that motion.
Well, the motion is on the table for the board, so the mover can accept something, but eventually the board has to accept that as a, as a change as well. Any further comment that people want to make before we take an action on this?
Okay, so I will, do I make an amendment to my amendment? Or do I change the language?
What is it that you now wish to do?
So if we want to strike the process, we can just say, "Strike the requiring three votes."
You're back to just the title.
We have future business, and this is where future agenda items will be discussed.
So you, I, I just want to clarify. So it's future business and you still want to have a description of it?
Well, I'm clarifying what it is because we don't have a future business. So I think for now, we should indicate future agenda items to be discussed.
"Future business dash, future agenda items to be discussed." Is that a friendly amendment that the board is willing to accept?
Does that reflect? I guess I should reflect back to Mr. Fattabene. Does that reflect?
Let me, let me ask, if, is there any objection to that as a friendly amendment? Okay, so hopefully, we have the amendment ready to be acted upon. "Future business dash, future agenda items to be discussed." Okay? Any further conversation on this as an item? If not, are we ready to vote? Does everybody understand what they're voting for? Okay. All in favor of adding a item to the order of business called "Future business, future agenda items to be discussed," raise your hand. Ms. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Fattabene, Mr. Luellen, all opposed. Mr. Convetito, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli, Mr. Patton. That motion fails four to five. So we're back to the amendment that has been, is, what is in front of you with the addition of open board.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to call the question.
Number 11, and then adjournment number 12. Okay. What?
That wasn't, that wasn't loud enough?
I'm gonna, I'd like to call the question. Okay. Is there a second? That requires a two-thirds majority. Mr. Convetito, any discussion? No, there's no discussion on a call of the question. All in favor of calling the question? Please raise your hand. Mr. Convetito, Mrs. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli, Mrs., Mr. Patton, all opposed. Mr. Fattabene, Mr. Luellen.
It's the first time.
And you're opposed. It's, okay, and Mrs. Lou McCormick. That, the motion passes six to three, so we are now ready for a vote, and that is the order of business as in front of you on enclosure number three, with the only change to the sheet that's in front of you is that item number 11 has been added, open board comment, and adjournment now becomes 12. Any questions on that as the?
It's not a debate.
No, I'm just asking to make sure board members are clear on what we're voting on. Okay, you're clear on what we're voting on?
No, I'm clear on what you want to put.
Well, no, there's, there's no further discussion because we've moved to call the question. So my, my question was only to clarify, everybody knows what they're voting on, that's all. So, all in favor of the enclosure number three as amended? Please raise your hand. Mr. Convetito, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli, Mr. Patton, opposed. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Fattabene, Mr. Luellen, you're opposed or abstaining?
I'm gonna abstain.
And one abstention. Mrs., Ms. Carnell abstaining. So that's six, five, three, one. Five, three, one. Enclosure number three. Several of the items of enclosure number four were debated within enclosure number three, but item number four, enclosure number four is, is yours. So what do you wish to do, Ms. Carnell?
I wish to turn it over to everybody else because we discussed a lot of them already.
Well, do you wish to withdraw this as an amendment because we've discussed it?
No. No, because we didn't discuss everything.
Okay, so you wish to make this as an amendment, as a motion, and then I'll get a second, and then you can make your debate.
Please, thank you.
The motion to, your, your motion is to amend.
Can I just have a moment to confirm before we go forward? Ms. Carnell?
We'll take a one-minute recess.
It's one minute by my, by my watch.
Sounds like we're in elementary school, I know, but, Ms. Carnell, what is your wish?
Well, in trying to save time, there was no reason to be redundant because some of those items were addressed previously. So what I have been trying.
Excuse me, Ms. Carnell has the floor.
So what I've been trying to say under your amendment was, I'd like to bring it up now under mine, under presentations. So my suggestion would be that we break up presentations to outside presenters and inside presenters. And I'd love, I would like to make, move the outside presenters up after public comment so that these people do not have to wait. And I would like to move up old business and new business and then have the inside presenters, which is exactly what I have here.
Before I take a second, I want to, I want to clarify so that we don't have a motion on the table yet. Have a second.
If the board would allow me just a moment of courtesy to explain the motion. The motion would be that the order of the meeting would, instead of having 12 line items as it has now, it would have 13. Line item five would be presentations from outside presenters.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. The handout had a, had a, I want to see where we are.
Yeah, I, I think, if I could, that Mr. Convetito is trying to clarify. If you'd let him finish his sentence, that may.
If, if you, on this, on the sec, on, if you look at the second motion about orders of meeting, flip, flip the page.
Close your four.
Close your four. Flip the page, okay? If we look at that item, okay?
On the back. On the back.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Items 10, 11, and 12 are not, due to the previous motion, are not in play right now with discussion.
So you're taking those off.
Right, we addressed that previously.
And number 13.
Okay.
Item number 13, because that, that's been addressed.
It's already been addressed.
Right, right. But it's still an item that's in the, in the, in the order of the meeting.
List, but it's been addressed.
Okay. What, what board member, Carnell, is suggesting is that presentations, when we have outside presenters, people who are here at the courtesy of the board, maybe it's Aeon, maybe it's an outside contractor or whatever, they should come prior to old and new business, okay? Right after public comment.
Which is where it is now.
Okay? And that other presentations, when they are district employees or, and so forth, should come after new business. So if a present, so if, if we don't have an outside presenter, that line item wouldn't be there, it would simply be for the presenter after new business. And I can let her explain the rationale for that, but that's the order of the motion.
So if I can help you, Ms. Carnell, and then it may help Mr. Fattabene as well, that your enclosure number four, you have public comment, new and old business items. Now, you've not written anything that.
No, I have. Oh, you don't have the other side? It's that?
Yeah, it says. To, I think your motion is to amend the bylaws to have a second presentations session that would follow item number seven, new business, and be prior to approval of the minutes.
That's right.
Correct?
Right, I want to break it into, correct.
So, yeah, so does that clarify it for you, Mr. Fattabene?
Not exactly. We're going back to the order of the agenda items that we just passed.
Yes, to clarify where, where she wants to put it.
Right, so the motion's not going to be her agenda items on page, on, on enclosure four at all.
Correct.
So we're going back to enclosure number three with the motion, with the agenda items we just passed, and inserting as numbered there on item number three, presentations where it is now after public comment, but that's going to be outside presenters.
Correct.
And adding into that one after, on the printed one, number seven, presentation inside.
Well, again, for the third time, it's just that I think people that are here from the outside should, we should give them the courtesy to be addressed earlier in our meetings so that they can go on with their evening and maybe go watch the Yankee game.
Yeah, and for the public and the board's information, of course, the presentations follows public comments, so that happens automatically. The difference is whether we then do some business and ask the staff to then follow the business versus plug them in with the presentations as we've explained in the past, that we generally have one presentation a meeting and sometimes it's inside, sometimes it's outside. Are there further, Mrs. Lou McCormick, do you wish to make a comment on the motion? You seconded it?
Oh, yeah. I guess my comment would be that oftentimes I find that we do run out of time and can't finish our business, just as the bylaws, and we end up waiting, what is it, seven months to finish our business. And we have a list of 15 agenda items that we've agreed to discuss, which are all business items, which have been deferred indefinitely. So out of concern for us doing our job in as efficient a way as possible, to maybe prioritize the business in any way that we can, I think is good.
You're speaking to adding presentations.
No, I'm just saying prioritizing the business.
But that's what the motion's on the table, so you need to speak to the motion of separating presentations from inside to outside.
Well, that's, I mean, so to the extent that we can prioritize getting business done before some of the items on the agenda, then I think that that's helpful.
Are there other, Mrs. Max and Cunnily, and Mrs. Gerber, and then back to Ms. Carnell?
For this, I would again say we have the precedent of the chair's discretion with the consent of the board to move presentations. When we had the Olympian come, Julie Cho, when the AP, when the AP people came to make their presentation, we've had presentation movement for outside vendors, so I agree that's a good idea to keep that early in the agenda and if we need to move it earlier out of consideration for them. I like that idea. But that's why I'm fine with presentations where it is because the thought, pardon me for being a little bit personal here, the thought of forcing those two English teachers to stay here until we were done with all of our old and new business with a 5:30 a.m. wake-up call, I volunteered for this, worked for it, got elected to it. The thought of making, what department member in their right mind would want to be part of a curriculum presentation when you might have to wait until 11:30 at night to present? So while I completely appreciate that idea of distinguishing them, the thought that assuming our own internal staff members can wait around for us to do what we need to do, whereas an outside vendor would need to be catered to with an earlier place on the agenda, I just, I definitely believe there can be discretion that needs to be invoked for movement up and down, but I don't agree with separating them and for these reasons. I think it was fine where it is. I appreciated that it was moved up.
And Mrs. Gerber, followed by Ms. Carnell.
Yeah, I guess I agree with Mrs. Max and Cunnily. I think where it is now, based on the amended one that we just voted on, where it's at five, I mean, we just have four fairly short items, you know, public comment and student reports, you know, really aren't that long, and then we have the presentation. And I agree, too, that if we have the staff giving presentations, that I would not want them to wait around through old and new business, so.
Ms. Carnell.
I also agree that the staff would not be very kind for them to be here at 11:30 giving a report, but I don't think we've had that where at 11:30 we started a presentation.
Because it's ahead of business.
No, because it just hasn't gone that long. So, this is my motion. We can vote on it. And the other thing is of moving up old and new business. Because I think we-
We need to stay on the motion of related to presentations. Unfortunately, you know, so if you have another amendment that you want to talk about new and old business-
It's a timing. She's flipping the order, so that is, they're related to each other. It's all about the timing of old and new business versus the internal presentations.
It was, my understanding to clarify is that the current, as recently voted with enclosure number three, if you look at number three, is we have student reports, public comment, then presentations, then old and new business, and that Ms. Carnell's motion was to add another presentations as number eight and then move all the other ones down. I thought that was the motion that was in front of us.
Okay, you're using the word another. I'm just saying split it up.
It's splitting the presentation.
Okay, split it up. The first, number five is presentations outside. The new number eight is presentations inside.
And yours, and yours, it includes both of them as number five.
No, no. The amendment is, I think, clear that, that we'll have two presentations, business, items on the order of business. The first one, number five, is presentations outside. And then after new business, the new item, number eight, proposed by Ms. Carnell, is presentations inside.
Correct.
Am I correct?
That's it.
I think that's, Mrs. Gerber, that's how you understood the motion?
That's how I understood the motion.
Yes.
Okay. Any other further comment on that before we act on it? Mr. Fattabene?
I guess, I'm real hesitant to try and make a distinction between outside and inside presenters. I just don't, I guess, fully understand that rationale to make that distinction. The presentations are given usually before we start our business, and they're presentations, we don't, they're not a voting item in essence, they're just presentations. So it's, to get them out of the way early on before you start your business seems to be, you know, it just gives something members to think about and, you know, for a future voting item. So I don't, and separating outside and inside, I think, I just don't know, I just don't quite follow the rationale for that and probably wouldn't-
And my only comment would be, from a practical point of view, we never have two presentations in the same night, it's just overkill. So either one or the other would occur, and, and I would agree with Mrs. Max and Cunnily to have a staff person, are gone are the days where all of the staff people live in the town that the school district is in. And so there are many staff people who travel a lot longer to get home than the nine of us. And so to cause them to have to wait around until that amount of time, I think, would be difficult. And I don't see a practical impact of it because we only have either inside or outside, we only have one presentation a meeting. Other further comments that people wish to make? Are we ready to vote? Does everybody understand the motion, which is to add an item, again, using enclosure number four, but not dealing with the actual item, words on an item, enclosure number four, that we add second presentations with the intention that the first one, number five, would be outside people and the second one, number eight, would be for inside people after new business and before approval of minutes? Is everybody clear on that? Okay. All in favor, raise your hands. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed. Mr. Conditito, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Fattabene, Mrs. Max and Cunnily, Mr. Patton. The motion is defeated six to three. So we'll, Mr. Fattabene?
I'd like to take the-
We're moving on to number five, so-
Well, no, we're still, that was the amendment failed. Now we're on the main motion.
No, that was the amendment. That was her amendment. She used enclosure number four.
All right.
She did not-
So, all right.
-move enclosure number four.
She moved, the motion was to amend what was previously amended, so we're back to the main motion, which is what was amended.
I don't believe so. I don't believe so. I'll rule that that's not correct.
But you can still put it forward, huh?
So, so is there any other item, since this is, you're the sponsor of this, is there any other item on enclosure number four that you would like to use as a way of bringing it forward?
Yes, and what I would like to do, because yours and mine were so similar, if the secretary can please read where we are exactly in the order of these.
So, right now, the order of business was, one, call to order and roll call, two, pledge of allegiance, three, student reports, four, public comment, five, presentations, six, old business, seven, new business, eight, approval of minutes, nine, superintendent report, 10, committee liaison reports, 11, open board comment, 12, adjournment.
So, she has the floor. Ms. Carnell, you have the floor, so.
Just asking, Miss number 10.
Committee liaison reports.
Thank you.
Any further item you wish to put a motion forward using enclosure number four as the vehicle? I'm asking if she wants to make a motion. I'm giving her a chance to-
Can any member make a motion?
She has the floor at the moment, so after she's finished with the floor, I'll recognize somebody else.
Okay, I just want to have an opportunity to make an amendment.
Are you trying to step in front of me?
Ms. Carnell.
No, I'm fine.
Okay, we have item number five.
Well, I not quite understand the procedure then. We have her amendments that were, her amendment was originally presented to be your amendment, or the original, one we just passed, and include an amendment to that, which failed. So now are we, I would think you're on the main?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
No, we're not.
So, so no other member has an opportunity to make an amendment to her, to what she started from that failed?
No, she should, you should.
The answer is no. We're moving on to item number five.
No, he should, wait, no, no, he should have an opportunity to, because she, didn't she just, no?
We're, we're moving on to enclosure number five. Because we've already addressed the amendment number, the enclosure number three and the enclosure number four, those motions are no longer on the table, and so the next order of business is enclosure number five.
I think I have an objection to that. As we did before, other members, a member presented their motion, we voted on it, and the other members had an opportunity to amend that motion if they decided to. So I thought we were, I would think we're back to a-
My ruling is that we have completed that item and that it would be out of order to, to not move on to the next item on our-
Right. So in other instances, we had other members who were able to make other motions, but in this instance, only the mover was prepared to make a motion.
While the motion was on the table, correct. But the motion is no longer on the table, so it's no longer on the table. Enclosure number five. I think, Mr. Fattabene, this is your item.
Actually, point of order, if I may. Mr. Chairman, you had said, when Mr. Fattabene had asked if there would be an opportunity to speak, I believe you had said that, yes, Ms. Carnell had the floor, and after that you will. I believe you said that.
I said that I would recognize another member. That doesn't mean I could forecast what Mr. Fattabene or any member might have wanted to say.
He's asking you to recognize, is my understanding.
Yeah, and I recognized him. But didn't permit me to make a motion. I wasn't able to make a motion to, to amend her main motion. Correct.
Point of order, the main motion, item number four was not, was withdrawn, was not presented by the person who made, who originally wrote it.
Used exhibit number four to-
Which is why he's passing on it.
Put her motion on at the table. We acted on that motion. We're now back on to enclosure number five. Mr. Fattabene, you have enclosure number five.
Enclosure number five. The intent of enclosure number five was to place in the bylaws a procedure similar to what is permitted by statute for an, in order for members to put an item on the agenda.
Is there a second for that motion? The standard motion that we're using is to amend the bylaws as per enclosure number five, and the reference for the board members is that he's added number two. But the standard motion that we're using is to amend the bylaws as shown in enclosure number five. Is there a second for that motion, Mrs. Lou McCormick? Further, further argument on behalf of it? Mr. Fattabene? If you wish.
The effort, well, the effort was this, to try and, and, since the statute permitted the calling of a special meeting by three members, the idea was not to have, to incur that kind of disruption and have a special meeting being called where certain members may be available and certain members may not be available, and to try and make an effort to make it at least more reasonable to accommodate the requests or the desires of three members to place items on the agenda. So I thought this was a process that was not, would not be as disruptive as a statutory process and one in which I thought could be workable. Now, I understand there may be difficulties in that, but I, that was the intent.
As the seconder of the motion, do you wish to make a comment? Mrs. Lou McCormick?
Same. I agree with everything he says, and I think it's, it's just important, I think, for this board to always recognize that there may be minority opinions and whether everyone agrees with them or not, it's important to be heard because each opinion reflects the views of a certain contingency. And based on, just the whole concept of freedom of opinion, if there are three board members, then it's probably an interest that's shared by others and is worthy of discussion.
Other comments that people wish to make? Mr. Llewellyn, followed by Mr. Patton.
Just to be brief, you know, as I stated when I was up at a CES meeting the other day and speaking to other board members, each of the ones I spoke to did have, in fact, the ability for three members to put something on the agenda. It is in conformance with a lot of, of other districts. I do think it's important for us to be able to discuss things. I mean, if you look at our agenda, we've got a laundry list of things to do that haven't made the agenda yet, so I do think that it's, it's a good amendment to make.
Any other further comments? Mr. Patton, you wish to make a comment?
Two quick points. One, I'm not going to support this for, well, again, for two reasons. One, I think it contradicts what we just approved an hour or so ago, which is the, the powers and the authority of the chair with the executive board or executive members of the committee to set an agenda. And two, there are many town boards in this town and other towns that if the minority was allowed to just add items to agendas without a two-thirds rule, then, again, agendas would be a mile long. And the reason why Robert's rules has, has, you know, certain things in it is to streamline meetings and process. And it's not fun to be the minority. Ask the RTM now, you know, or it doesn't matter, this year, RTM any year, there's always a, there's always a minority and always a majority. And it's just the way it is.
Wait a second. Was, did anybody else raise their hand beforehand? If not, Ms. Lou McCormick.
Well, that may be true. I believe that, you know, according to the state statutes, they go out of their way to recognize that if at least three members of a board want to discuss something, they have a specific statute that says that they may do some, so, and call a special meeting. And that if the meeting is then not set up, that they then have the right to set it up themselves with usual written notice. So there is an acknowledgement by the state itself that if three members of a board are interested in a topic, that it is worthy of discussion. It is not frivolous. It may be frivolous if it's only one person. However, three members has a distinct definition within the state statutes that- was allowed to just add items to agendas without a two-thirds rule, then, again, agendas would be a mile long. And the reason why Robert's rules has, you know, certain things in it is to streamline meetings and process. And it's not fun to be the minority. Ask the RTM now, you know? Or it doesn't matter, this year, RTM any year, there's always a minority and always majority. And it's just the way it is.
Wait a second. Was... Did anybody else raise their hand beforehand? If not, Ms. Lou McCormick.
Well, that may be true. I believe that, you know, according to the state statutes, they go out of their way to recognize that if at least three members of a board want to discuss something, they have a specific statute that says that they may do some... so, and call a special meeting. And that if the meeting is then not set up, that they then have the right to set it up themselves with usual written notice. So there is an acknowledgement by the state itself that if three members of a board are interested in a topic, that it is worthy of discussion. It is not frivolous. It may be frivolous if it's only one person. However, three members has a distinct definition within the state statutes that if they do... And I can read it to you. It's section 10 to 18, inside the meeting section.
Excuse me. Ms. Lou McCormick?
Yes.
We have a copy of it, so it's not necessarily for you to read it.
Oh, I wasn't going to really read it. I wasn't. But I said I could read it to you. And people watching on TV may not have a copy of it also. So, you know, for their benefit, it says that one may be called by any three members by giving the usual written notice to the other members. So, again, I know you're considering it frivolous, potentially, but I would indicate otherwise.
Mr. Chair, can I respond to that?
I'm not sure that Mr. Patton... That was the intent of Mr. Patton's comments. There is a provision within state law for that to happen, and so in one sense, that circumstance is covered. Mr. Patton, you've asked for a response, so go ahead.
Pretty much echoing what you just said. Yes, exactly. The state has specific parameters for three board members to call a special meeting, you know, for issues that those members may see fit to raise. So bylaws are meant to govern, you know, an individual body, and I don't think, in this town, the way things have gone, you know, for the last half dozen or more years, that I don't think that that's some... that's a place that we want to go. I think the state law covers that, and I never use the word frivolous.
Other comments from people who have not yet spoken?
Apologies.
Other comments from people who have not yet spoken? Any comments from people who have not yet spoken? Have you...
I did, but I...
You did? Okay. Have you spoken on this issue yet?
I made the motion.
This is your motion. Okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to talk? If not, Mr. Fattabean, followed by Mr. Lew Allen.
I just wanted to indicate that I, you know, I do believe the RTM has a procedure whereby the rules to regulate permit a certain number of members to place an item on the agenda. I just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Lew Allen.
Would Mr. Fattabean be open to a friendly amendment to make it four members, such that it is effectively one less than half... Well, there is no half at nine, so at four, you can't say it's a minority, per se.
I have no objection to making a friendly amendment for...
Do board members have an objection? Mr. Convetito.
It substantially changes the motion. It's not a friendly amendment.
Okay, so you object, so in order to make the amendment, you'd have to make it as amendment to that amendment, and then the board would act on it?
Just through the chair, Mr. Convetito, how is it changing?
Friendly amendments under Robert's rules are generally grammatical changes or he-she changes.
Mr. Lew Allen.
When you substantially change the meaning of the motion, it's no longer a friendly amendment.
Mr. Lew Allen, a friendly amendment is only a friendly amendment as long as it's unanimous consent. As long as one board member wishes to object to it, it's no longer friendly, and the Robert's rule says that we need to address it as a formal amendment. So do you wish to make that as a formal amendment or not?
Sure, I'd like to make that as a formal amendment. I would like to formally amend this to reread. If an item is requested to be placed on the agenda by at least four board members, and so on and so forth, as written.
Is there a second to that amendment, to the amendment? Ms. Cornell, you have the floor to make any further comments that you wish?
No, I think I've said it. Thank you.
Ms. Cornell, any further comments? Any other conversation on changing it from four... from three to four? If there are no comments, are we ready to act? As if all the board members understand that the sentence remains the same as shown on enclosure number five. The only change by this amendment to the amendment is it says four board members. Is there clarity on that? If so, all in favor of that, raise your hand. Ms. Lou McCormick, Ms. Cornell, Mr. Fattabean, Mr. Lew Allen, all opposed. Mr. Convetito, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Maxon Cunelli, and Mr. Patton. That motion fails four to five. We're back to the amendment. I won't call it the main amendment, because that'll confuse it, but the amendment that is in front of you, as Mr. Fattabean has presented. Any further conversation on that? Mrs. Maxon Cunelli.
Just briefly, well, I would like to believe that this board would respect the intent of that. This is a bylaw which theoretically could go on for years and years, and the point is it does open up the board to having meetings being utterly driven by an agenda of three members. I'm not at all saying that about this body, but it's something that the next Board of Ed would inherit. And I just... We have the bylaw change that we put in, which we now have all three members consulting on and having input on the agenda as is right now, and we have ability to bring up other comments. And if we start finding that our voices aren't being heard, even if we don't have such formal recognition, then we need to look at who our chairperson is. And until that happens, I believe there are mechanics in place already to address this. So that would be my reason for not supporting, is that otherwise you could have three people who dictate... And obviously, we're all aware of how much work we need to do and how much we would like to take on and tackle, and any three of us could then start piling things on, because it was something we felt to be of interest, and then that's not respecting the leadership that we have.
I see no further comments. Are we ready to act? Oh, Mr. Convetito goes.
Could I just, through the chair, ask the mover to respond to that? Because that's my issue as well.
Mr. Fattabean, do you wish to make a comment on...
No.
Okay. Okay. With no further debate, with no further conversation, the item in front of you is enclosure number five, with the change being in number two. All in favor, raise your hand. For the amendment, yes. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Cornell, Mr. Fattabean, Mr. Lew Allen, all opposed. Mr. Convetito, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Maxon Cunelli, Mr. Patton. That motion fails four to five. Enclosure number five. We're now on to enclosure number six, which I think is Mr. Convetito's. And your motion is to amend the bylaws as shown on enclosure number six. That's the formal motion we've been using.
That's my motion.
Is there a second for that? Mrs. Gerber, wish to make an argument on behalf of it?
Yes. This section was actually amended back in November to its current form. Since November, it hasn't worked, and it's, in my opinion, it hasn't worked, because words like essence put the onus on the secretary to interpret what was meant, what was not meant, and I don't think we've had a unanimous vote on the minutes since then. And prior to that, I could probably pull out a handful in my time on the board where there wasn't one. What this motion does is it brings Article 1, Section 3, Paragraph 3 back, essentially to where it was prior to being amended, by saying that the minutes shall be written in conformance with the provision of Robert's Rules of Order, Article 15, Section 48, in the current rules of Robert's rules. Minutes shall contain a notice in bold type indicating that the full meeting recording can be obtained from the district, and list any other forms that may be... Excuse me, be available to the public, such as fair TV and so forth. I actually, on my own, went through, actually, the congressional minutes, and the congressional minutes for an entire year are less than 300 pages. But you can go to the congressional record, okay, and find out actually what was said and done. So it's a matter of trying to get this board to get off of spending 45 minutes amending minutes and making motions on minutes. The minute should include what the item was, what the motion was, what was voted, what occurred, what business took place, and not the essence of people's discussions. That can be found in the record, which is recorded and held in a district office.
Mrs. Gerber, you second it?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Convetito. I would just say that from November of 2011 to November of 2013, there were 37 sets of minutes, and only one did not pass unanimously. Since November of 2013, as Mr. Convetito said, there has barely been a set of minutes that has passed unanimously. So I think it would make it much better for myself and any other secretaries who come along down the pike to have this language, as opposed to the language that was amended in November.
Other comments? Mrs. Lou McCormick?
I would just like to say that I don't believe that this amendment is the cause of the lack of a unanimous vote. And I guess, from my own perspective, I know that. And I would also say that to not... for a board not to want to have our discussions recorded without discrimination based on viewpoint, to strike that language, to me, is highly questionable.
Other comments that people wish to make? Mrs. Maxon Cunelli, followed by Mr. Lew Allen.
Just so I'm clear on what the future minutes would then look like, that phrase, "without discrimination, et cetera," that Mrs. Lou McCormick just referenced, that would be redundant, because there would be no recording of discussion. Is that correct? I'm not sure to whom I'm directing this question.
Through the chair to Mr. Convetito, but I think that Robert's rules would... The commentary in Robert's rules about how to keep minutes would reflect that it's not discussion.
We would say discussion was held on the motion, and the motion passed or was voted on, so forth.
The phrase within Robert's rules essentially is, you don't put in the minutes what was discussed, you put in the minutes what was acted upon.
There is no discriminatory language.
Because as a follow-up, I would say, I have to admit, I have gone back to the minutes many times. I find that language to be very helpful that's in there. That said, you know, dating, you know, preceding Mrs. Gerber for years with... Well, I'm only familiar with the previous secretary. Minutes were a very quick vote, and we have work to do. I mean, there's so much about this meeting, is I want to get a more efficient meeting. I want to get work done. I want to do things to play our part in moving the district forward. And so, no offense to Mr. Convetito, I find myself unfortunately in support of this amendment, because I wish it were the case, and I absolutely respect people's viewpoints in terms of what they'd like to see in there, but if it means we just have to boil it down to simple statements of facts so that judgment is taken out of it, then I think that's what this board needs to do, so we can focus on the discussions.
Mr. Lew Allen, and then I think Mr. Fattabean, or was it the other way around?
Feel free.
Mr. Fattabean, then Mr. Lew Allen.
I'm going to move to...
You're making an amendment to your own amendment?
It's not my amendment.
Mr. Convetito's amendment, I'm sorry. Your original amendment.
My original amendment added the words... I don't know the exact words, but added the sentence, I guess, "The minutes should accurately record the essence of discussions during the board meetings without discrimination based on viewpoint," which in my opinion...
That's what is in the bylaws right now.
That's what's in the bylaws right now, which I believe was a... As a broad statement goes, one that I agree with and one which I think should be done in any minutes. Obviously, that caused a lot of controversy on the board. The problem that I have with the addition...
Can I make... Get the motion on the table and then make the debate?
The motion is to delete "be written in conformance with the provisions of Robert's Rules of Order," Article 15, Roman numeral 15, Section 48, as described on pages 468 to 471 of the current edition of Robert's rules. That... I would delete that whole section. My motion is to delete that section.
I think your motion has to go further than that, if I can give you some guidance. Do you wish to delete the section in bold, and the sentence that you had added in November is, with the current amendment, crossed out and therefore would be deleted? So if you deleted the bold and just left it as shall...
Right, I would delete what was added.
There's no ending sentence there.
Right. In essence, what I'll do is I would delete the minutes shall, as well as proposed, be written. So I'll take out that whole section. I'll take out what was previously committed in there, because it's very controversial. Take it out. My reluctance to refer to Robert's rules is that I think there's a misinterpretation of Robert's rules. Robert's rule says, "In ordinary society..."
Can I clarify? I want to get the amendment on, so we can then get a second and get... And then make your argument. You wish to amend the amendment to delete the minutes shall, and then be written in conformance with, all the way through the word "public"?
Delete the minutes shall, and delete "be written in conformance with the provisions of Robert's Rules of Order," and so forth, to the...
All the way through to the word "public."
To the... No, that's it. To rules.
Okay, to rules. You wish to delete to rules.
And the rationale...
A second. Is there a second for that? Can I get a second for Mr. Fattabean's motion?
I guess, yes, but I'd like to hear the rationale.
Okay, for the purposes of debate, you're second again. It's on the floor, so, Mr. Fattabean.
Right, it's my belief that there's a mis... That section quoted by Mr. Convetito, pages 468 to 471, is not the complete section of Robert's rules on minutes. That section only refers to ordinary societies. Ordinary societies shall only record the minutes... Can only record the minutes what was done, not necessarily what was said. But an ordinary society is a private society. Their meetings are not published, or their minutes are not published. In that instance, that makes sense, maybe. We are a public body. We were... And the Robert's rules, in the later pages, describe when minutes are published, how they should be treated. And when minutes are published, there's a record of who says what, and a synopsis or abstract of what they say. So I think it would be a disservice to the public, as well as this board, if the minutes were just, this was the motion, this was the vote, and that's it. It's absolutely mind-boggling, in my opinion, how a public body can act in that way, and it's a disservice to the public. It's a disservice to promoting open government. It completely vitiates the concept of our lack... Of our apparent having no... Having transparency in the way government works. It provides an incomplete record as to what the rationale and discussion of what was had at that meeting, so that in the future, when you go back to revisit a topic, you may have an interpretation of what should be done with that motion, because you have no history of record as to what the rationale was or how to interpret that motion you passed. So there's always going to be debate and controversy over what that motion really meant, without having to look at the minutes. And there's going to be debate as, no, I... Remember, I said this at that meeting. No, no, you said that at that meeting. No, you know, I meant this when I... You know, that was the intent of the motion, I thought, and there's no record to indicate what that is. It just... It just seems like it's going to... Not necessarily the best way to go with minutes being just what can be done in an ordinary, private society. We're a public body, and it just seems inappropriate. And that's my reason for go back to what it was before, if that is controversial. I still think the broad concept of saying we're not going to discriminate based on viewpoint and have accurate minutes is a concept that I... I can't... I just don't understand why that's a concept that's foreign to a lot of people, but it is.
Mr. Lew Allen, you were next.
Thank you very much. I think a couple of things. I think that I agree in the whole fact that, you know, what we're saying from pages 468 to 471, and that those are not for public minutes, is... Shows even a lack of transparency in how we're trying to write the minutes. I think that, you know, if you go back and look two years ago at the minutes, the minutes read very differently than they read over the last several months. So, you know, let's take this package, for example. If we look at the pages we've gone through so far and look at each of the proposals, there are no initials other than Paul's, mine, and Eileen's. The rest have been struck from the pages. So there's something as well that you go through. So, you know, ELM is on the top of pages, JL is, and Paul is, but the others aren't. So I think things do need to accurately reflect. Those were on there several months ago. They're not on this set, so they were actually removed. Don't know why, but I think we need more transparency.
Thank you. For the benefit of the board, the section that Mr. Fattabean is referring to says, "Publication of an assembly's proceedings," and it reads, "Sometimes, a society wishes to have a full record of its proceedings made available to the public, and when such a record of the proceedings is to be published, in which case it is often called proceedings, transactions, or the like, it frequently contains, in addition to the information described above, the typical form of minutes that was discussed, a list of the speakers on each side of every question with an abstract or the text of each address." It starts with the words "sometimes." I think we do have, personal opinion, we have both fair TV, and we also have an audio record of our minute... of our meetings, so there are opportunities to go back and check exactly what was said and what the debate was on meetings. Other comments that people wish to make? Mrs. Lou McCormick?
So I guess I'd like to clarify that. So, for example, we just had the...
So I guess I'd like to clarify that, so, for example, we just had this last meeting. My understanding was that there's no live recording of it for Fair TV. So where can we find record of what was actually said at those meetings?
I want to say, right in that box, but each night, the tape, the tape, as we call it, is secured by the Secretary to the Superintendent. And the last time we had this conversation, you said that we have file drawers full of these tapes, and you've never known of anybody throwing them out. My guess is that the first file drawer has a tape this big, and the current file drawer just has these little things in it. So that they, there is an audiotape of the meeting that the district keeps, separate from Fair TV.
Understood. I just, so based on that process, I would say it's fairly impractical to assume that the publicly would actively come and review and pull that one little tape, if there's many people who are interested in reviewing it also, or they wouldn't even know how to access it. I would say that the minutes are a much more efficient way to review, which is why most public bodies probably use minutes, or an accurate record of what's being discussed. Again, I can't understand why this board has a problem with the proposed language that Mr. Fattabean had proposed. It seems perfectly reasonable. It is, again, I will say, it's baffling.
Thank you. Final comments. Mr. Convertito, and this is on the amendment to the amendment, Mr. Fattabean's amendment.
This is on the amendment to the amendment.
Yes, where he is striking out the sentence that starts on the third line, at the end of the line, with the word "the," "minutes shall," and then be written in conformance all the way through to the next line down that ends with the word "rules." That sentence would be deleted.
My problem with that amendment is it doesn't give the Secretary any direction on what the board expects, which is the same problem with the previous amendment that was done in November. It allows for interpretation, or whatever. If you want to go to the other section of Roberts Rules, that says a synopsis of the discussion, and who's discussed on what side, and so forth, you know, I could go that direction, In my, in my 13 years of coming aboard of ed meetings, I have never seen a board argue about minutes the way we have since December. And it seems preposterous to me, okay? You can't come to meetings and say, "I meant to say that," because that's not what you said, okay? And we waste so much, this, to me, is a waste of time and frustrating to me, okay? And I don't even know why we're, it was, we're having an issue over minutes. And if somebody can explain to me why we were having an issue over minutes prior to November, then maybe we can craft something that works. But I'm not in favor of that.
As the maker of the motion, is that the final comment?
The amendment to the motion?
As the maker of the original motion, do you wish to make a final comment as the maker of the amendment?
I'd make a, yeah, then my, I agree that there has difficulty with the minutes. Why there has been difficulty with minutes is something separate apart from what was in our rules, and what's in Roberts Rules. So I don't think you can blame either our bylaws or Roberts Rules for that difficulty. So adding this section, the danger of adding this section, literally, by not including the pages that relate to published minutes, you're in essence requiring the minutes only to say, not what was said, but what was done. So you have a motion and a vote. By, literally by this amendment, that's all you're going to have. And I think that is senseless, absolutely ridiculous. So that's why I say, just, I would, I propose my motion to delete that, and just start where you had before, and if you have debate on the minutes, you have debate on the minutes. But to only, if this motion pass, if my motion fails, and it's, this motion is not further amended, it's a complete disservice to the public, I think, to this body, in its ability to know what it had done in the past, and its ability to look at the record and understand why a ruling was made, or why a motion was passed or not passed, and will actually have further controversy, because I guarantee there's going to be debate as to what that motion was intended to mean, and it's going to be construed or advocated by some people that it means something different, because there's no record to argue it, or to imply that it doesn't mean that. It's really, in my mind, very dangerous.
Clearly, the motions will be recorded, the actual motions will be recorded in the minutes, and yes, all motions can, in the future, be subject to, oh, I thought it meant this, and you thought it meant that, but the actual motion will be part of the minutes. Any further comment that people wish to make? Is Mr. Convertito, is your the final comment, or do we have others? Mr. Convertito?
Again, through the chair to Mr. Fattabean. If that's your concern, are you opposed to having the section read that they shall be written in conformance with the provisions of Roberts Rules for public meetings?
Publish minutes.
It's publish minutes.
Publish minutes, I'm sorry. I just want the board to have a guidance as to how minutes should be constructed, because I don't want to have every meeting a debate on that it should have been this way or it should have been that way.
So let me...
And Roberts Rules gives you that guidance.
If you went in that direction, if I can comment, the direction to the Secretary would include complying with the phrase, "A list of the speakers on each side of every question with an abstract, or the text of each address," would become part of the expectation, because that's the part that is under the publication of an Assembly's proceedings. Mr. Fattabean, do you want, wish to comment on Mr.?
My intent has always been to have an accurate record, and to have every viewpoint presented that occurs at that meeting, on the record, so that future individuals can benefit from that, as well as people making those comments have some assurance that they were at least heard and have their record, comments in the record, so that later on, when controversy arises, or when an issue arises, those official minutes of the body can be looked at, and then understanding be had as to what transpired, and whether or not that was a good, you know, what the issues were and what we considered in making that decision. So if this, if you add that the minutes shall list, contain a list of the speakers on each side of every question with an abstract, or the text of each address, and that's, that's an accurate, it's done accurately, and without, without not including someone and listing others, I have no problem with that. I mean, I, the whole intent here is to have an accurate record, and I think there's a value in having an accurate record, which a lot of people dismiss, which I don't understand. I mean, how many times have, I have gone back to minutes, on many occasions, to refresh my recollection of what was discussed at that meeting? And a lot, if it's not in there, I have to, my recollection may not be as accurate as the minutes, and it's going to be a misinterpretation, or I may start discussing what was already discussed, or I may not realize that that issue was already addressed, and I don't have to raise it again, if I don't know what the rationale, or what was debated or discussed was. So it's a problem.
Mr. Convertito?
I don't know what the balance is.
I'm wondering if the debate is kind of just circling around the same issue, but Mr. Convertito, you wanted to make a comment.
I'm not in disagreement with Mr. Fattabean. I'm just, my issue is that what is currently in the bylaws isn't working, and I just want to find something that's workable.
Okay. Are there any further comments?
Just to clarify, so was an amendment officially...
Yes.
Made, did it get...
I will clarify that, if any other comments on the amendment. The amendment to the amendment that Mr. Fattabean is proposing, to Mr. Convertito's amendment, is that on the third line down, the word at the very end that starts with "the," "minutes shall," be written in conformance with the provisions of Roberts Rules of Order, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, until you get to the word "rules," would be deleted. Is that, is that clear to you, that that's what we're acting on, is to delete those words?
So then, in the result of that going back and forth between Mr. Fattabean and Mr. Convertito, I had thought was resulting in Mr. Fattabean accepting the change in language?
No.
Okay.
No, there was no motion or anything like that put on the table. So, Mr. Fattabean, is that the amendment that you made, in realizing that...
That's the amendment I made. If someone wants to make an amendment.
Amendment to the amendment to the amendment is not permitted. So if you wanted to bring up another idea...
The idea is that it...
...to clarify, we'd have to act on this one first, and then consider another.
Right. So I would say that you delete, in my mind, this language that is dangerous, and literally interpret it would be problematic for this board, as well as the public, and in which case then the Secretary would still be responsible for keeping minutes, but doesn't identify the minute specifically, as it didn't in the past, so it goes back to what happened in the, what happened in the past, so you're back to where you were. And if someone wants to make a motion to include that the minutes shall include a list of the speakers on each side of every question with an abstract of the text of each address, then they can make that motion after that.
Okay. So, is there clarity on the motion, the amendment to the amendment that we're taking? The word "the" ending in the word "rules," Mr. Fattabean's amendment to the amendment is to delete those words. Is there clarity?
Yep.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? All in favor of the amendment as proposed by Mr. Fattabean, raise your hand. Mr. Lou McCormick, Mr. Convertito, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Fattabean, Mr. Lou Allen, all opposed. Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mrs. Maxine Canelly, Mr. Patton. The motion passes five to four. So we now have a amendment that has the relevant, that ends in the word "in an official record" on the third line, and then continues to, "minutes shall contain a notice in bold type indicating that," and then the rest of that paragraph. That is what would be the description of the Secretary's duties, if we approve this as it is currently.
I'd like to make an amendment to insert the language that Mr. Fattabean read earlier.
Mr. Patton raised his hand, and then Mr. Lou Allen.
I don't know if we're going, I don't know if we're going in the same direction. Before I, I even make an amendment, well, are we, we're still talking about the main motion, correct?
We're commenting on the amendment, so as long as your comments relate to the Secretary's duties, you're in good shape.
Through the chair to either Mr. Fattabean or Mr. Convertito. If the words "the minutes shall" be written in conformance with the provisions of Roberts Rules of Order, period, if that sentence is added back in, without the specific pages and sections, does that satisfy the criteria of providing direction to the Secretary?
In order to provide the proper direction to the Secretary, it should say, "Provisions of Roberts Rules of Order for published minutes," and that would direct her to the correct area. So that would do it, okay? Without putting in the ancillary language, because, Robert, you know, sections change in Roberts Rules and so forth.
Understood. I stand corrected. Then I would like to make that...
So that there's clarity on the board's part, that would be directing the Secretary to that phrase, "A list of the speakers on each side of every question with an abstract, or the text of each address," is the direction that you would be giving her. So proceed, so that you understand what, you know...
What's the amendment?
Well, he hasn't made it yet, but I wanted to make sure that there was clarity as to the section he's referring to.
Is there any, since I don't have that, the Roberts Rules right in front of me, is there anything else in that section, other than what you just read, that would pertain to this?
The whole thing starts with the sentence, "Sometimes a society wishes to have a full record of its proceedings made available to the public..."
From Roberts Rules.
"...and when..." Let me finish. Mr. Fattabean, I take a breath every once in a while. "And when such a record of the proceedings is to be published, in which case it is often called proceedings, transactions, or the like, it frequently contains, in addition to the information described above," and they go into a, what is typically in the minutes that, from the prior pages, "the speakers on each side of every question with an abstract, or the text of each address." So that section says, "the minutes as you normally write them, plus a list of the speakers on each side of every question with an abstract of the text, or the text of each address."
Through the chair to the Secretary. Would that provision make your life easier or not?
I highly doubt it.
What, do you wish to make an amendment, or what? You're making comments at the moment?
I do not wish to make an amendment.
Mr. Lou Allen?
I would like to make the amendment to add the words, please, that Mr. Fattabean has read, rather than referencing the section, and the rationale for that is that...
So can you, before you make the rationale, can you make sure that we understand what words you're adding?
Sure. I'd like to amend. Paul, start to read, please.
I insist, mover.
Yeah, please.
Yep.
"The minutes shall..."
So, it would add back in, "the minutes shall," after the, after the second sentence, and the word "official record." "The minutes shall contain a list of the speakers on each side of every question with an abstract, or the text of each address."
That's your motion?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Yeah, it's...
On both sides of an issue.
There, and then it would pick up here. I'll give this to you. So is there a second for that motion? Is there a second for that motion?
Yeah, I'll second.
For the purposes of discussion. You're seconding it for the purposes of discussion or not?
Yes.
There's no discussion unless there's a second.
Well, we just had some discussion without a motion on the floor.
I just wanted to continue that discussion before I seconded it, because I want to make sure that Mr. Fattabean's language was complete, if there was further to that sentence on both sides of an issue.
No, the sentence ended exactly the way Mr. Fattabean read it, is in the Roberts Rules, he read it exactly the way it's in that book.
Okay, all right, then I'll second it.
So is there a second to the amendment? Is there a second for the purposes of discussion? Mr. Lou Allen, you have the floor for any argument.
Thank you. The reason I like the specific words better than referencing the section, as I believe the section is references somewhat ambiguous, because it says "typically contains." This says, I think, addresses all of the concerns we heard before, wherein it states what will be included specifically, and that's why I think it eliminates the ambiguity.
Okay. And Mrs. Lou McCormick, you seconded it, so do you wish to...
No, I agree. I think it's been well discussed now.
My concern on this is that it makes the Secretary's duties almost impossible to perform. I understand the discussion on both sides, but at the moment, I'm, I'm, have always been, as Mr. Fattabean knows, I have always been in favor of the strict review of Roberts Rules, keeping the minutes, and because we do have a tape, we do have Fair TV, so, and we have lots of documents that talk about the pros and cons of a particular item, because they're all in attachments. So, so I am not in favor of this, because I think it would make the minutes, to do a abstract, or the text of each address, would make it almost impossible to, there'd be a lot of trees that we would be going through to fully comply with this. Other comments that people wish to make, Mrs. Maxine Canelly?
Since what is intended is what has been the buffalo here, when it says "abstract or text," what does that fundament, does that mean that it would be the, what every single one of us just said in the past 10 minutes, while not necessarily verbatim, paraphrased every single comment?
So can I ask the English teacher, what does the word "abstract" mean?
Summary, and so I want to, that's why I want to be clear, that it's of every speaker, every time that they speak.
Yes.
Excuse me, every, the speaker, every time he or she speaks.
Yes.
Dear God.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's a proper interpretation of what that language says. A list of the speaker who spoke, and an abstract of what they said. Not everything they said every time they said it. It's a list of the, who the speaker is, identifying the speaker, and an abstract of what they said. It's not a text, it's not a verbatim necessarily, and it doesn't have to be a situation where it's every...
And it doesn't have to be a situation where it's every time he spoke. It lists him as a speaker and identifies an abstract of what he said. So, interpreting that language for the purposes of defeating emotion, in a sense it is contrary to what that language says, I think is improper. The language says what it says. It's interpreted the way it's supposed to be interpreted.
The language says what it says.
I interpret it to mean the speaker is identified, and you have an abstract of what he said during the whole meeting.
And have you completed your comment?
So, I think that's what the language says, and that's... And the interpretation of language, like every language, is going to be debated. But at least there's language to debate. If you have minutes that have nothing, there's no language to debate.
And as a comment, and then I'll go to Mr. Convertito. The issue always, of course, is beauty is in the eye of the beholder. And so, if the secretary does an abstract, somebody will argue, well, that didn't include the phrase "X" that I thought should have been part of it. So, Mr. Fadabean, I think you are correct that each person will have their own interpretation of what that phrase should or should not mean within the minutes. Mr. Convertito?
Through the chair to the mover, or the assistant to the mover.
Mr. Llewellyn.
The wording says, it says, "Abstract or text." Is that correct?
That's what the language in Robert's Rules says.
Okay. Would they take a friendly amendment to strike or text from the amendment? He's the mover.
Mr. Llewellyn, you have the motion, so you'd be the first one to decide, but the rest of the board would have to agree by unanimous consent.
I think I would, because text would have a different interpretation, where it would be a stenographer. And that's not what's expected.
So, Mr. Convertito is asking if the board would be willing to accept as a friendly amendment, taking out the three words or the text. Is that correct? Any objection to that? Mr. Patton?
I think regardless whether you've got an abstract and/or text, I think it's too much information. And I think if you... I'm not for this either way, but I think if you take out the text and then have to offer summary, it's as difficult, if not more difficult, to summarize someone's statement than it is to just verbally transcribe it, which again goes back to that we have two written or electronic records of the meeting, and comments aren't needed in minutes, just actions.
Any further debate on this question? So, did you say you objected to that? Or are you in... Will you accept deleting the words or the text from the sentence?
No, I object to the... I object to it.
Okay. So, then make it as a motion. Make it as a...
So, there's no friendly amendment?
No, that's right, too. We can't... That'd be an amendment to the amendment. So, we need to take action on the amendment, which is to add, "The minutes shall contain a list of the speakers on each side of every question with an abstract or the text of each address." Is it people... Are people clear on the amendment to the amendment? Is there clarity? Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
I am so sorry to do this. In what way, and I direct this to whomever has experience of this and knows, what is this doing to change the minutes as they're presently being produced? I mean, I see in the minutes now that we... There is a concerted effort at capturing the essence of very, very lengthy conversations with many, many speakers. How is this... How is... At this point, if we accepted this amendment, then this entire motion is basically saying, "Keep doing what you're doing." And that's where... Unless someone can explain to me what is being changed, that's what I'm genuinely unclear on.
Mr. Convertito wishes to respond to that?
Sure. The difference would be that the essence of the discussion... To record the essence of the discussion leads for interpretation. If you do simply an abstract of it, it's Board Member Cannelly spoke in favor of the motion on these three items. Board Member Llewellyn spoke opposed to the motion on these three items. Okay? All right? And it's a summary of what they spoke about, okay? Or what they disagreed with. It's not an essence of, you know... Okay? Essence has a whole different meaning than a summary of, "Board Member X spoke in favor of this motion based on these three items, would have liked to have seen this item changed." Board Member, boom. Very factual, very summative, okay? No essence of the discussion, not that the room got heated, okay? No nothing, okay? It's, this is what was said. Okay? This person was in favor of it on these three items. This one wasn't, okay? And that's a summary or an abstract, okay? What it essentially does is give the secretary a framework to work with him without trying to figure out what I was thinking when I said what I said.
So, that's Mr. Convertito's explanation, but the secretary, who will actually have to operationalize this, wants to make a comment.
Well, I guess my question would be, that's Mr. Convertito's interpretation of what this motion is. But I think before I know whether or not I want to support this, I would need to know, you know... My whole thing is, if we're going to go through all of this and end up right back where we started, I don't really see what the point is. I'm happy to try to accommodate people. It seems like I haven't been able to do that over the past few months. If there can be some clarification or guidance as to what we're looking for, otherwise, we're just going to have Groundhog Day again, and we're going to be arguing minutes for 45 minutes per meeting, which I think is a huge waste of everyone's time.
Is there any disagreement with what Mr. Convertito said in terms of describing what the abstract, the word "abstract" would mean? Am I overstating what you said? No? Okay. Is there any disagreement among the board with what Mr. Convertito said the secretary would be following?
And I hope I'm not overstepping. Could I ask that the secretary put that question into the minutes so that we have it as a matter of record? The clarification that Mr. Convertito's description of what "abstract" means is what we are all voting on.
And we will get Mr. Convertito's exact words onto the tape for that purpose. Any other commentary by the board?
And just to clarify, as part of your definition of an abstract, if questions are asked or questions recorded? In other words, if a request for information is asked, is that recorded? Mr. Convertito asked that, the board look at, boom.
If there's discussion up, and it was, Mr. Convertito has spoken in favor of this, but asked for more information to support this issue.
Very good. Thank you for the clarification.
I mean, you want the public to understand where you're coming from as a board member, but not to the point where it becomes a transcript, okay? And I'm trying to figure out a way to strike that balance without, one, driving a secretary crazy, okay? And, two, driving nine members of the board crazy, saying, "I didn't mean it that way. I meant this." It's simply very factual. This information was requested in order to proceed on this issue. This was just a very factual... I mean, go read the RTM minutes, okay? I mean, it's... If you want an example, you know, or the First Selectman minutes. They're very factual, very summative, and says, "This is the position. You know, Kevin Carley didn't like this and wanted to do this, and he lost on a two-to-one vote." Okay? I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel here. I don't know why this is a problem. And I went directly to the opposite end of the spectrum, because we couldn't seem to figure it out in the middle of the spectrum. Okay? So, I'm more than happy to come to the middle if we can understand what, you know, an abstract is and what's expected of the secretary. But I certainly don't want to drive whoever this secretary or future secretary is crazy trying to interpret what the board wants.
Can I have this as the last speaker, Mrs. Lou McCormick, on this issue?
And can I ask for one more clarification? Does this then include that when the public comes and speaks, that we will also record an abstract of what each of them says?
I would say no.
So, the public's comment...
Robert's Rules is very clear that when guest speakers are here, you give their name and the topic they were here to speak of, but make no attempt to capture what they tried to say.
So, that includes the presenters? So, all presentations, there would be no abstract on that? And is that also... Am I correct? Or is that not the case?
The abstract of what the presenters present are frequently... The document that they give us, the discussion that's been recorded in the minutes, has been the discussion board members have had on that presentation.
Okay. So, when the board member discusses with a presenter, that discussion and the abstract of that discussion would be included?
The board member's comments.
But during open... During the public comment, so when the public comes up and makes comment, their comments would or would not be included?
Not.
So, no public comment will be included as part of the minutes?
No, I didn't say that. The Robert's Rules has a very specific line to give direction on that, and that they say that when guest speakers are here, no effort should be made to try and capture what they said. You should put their name in and the topic that they were here to address us on. So, and that's how we've been doing it for a long time.
So, that's for public comment?
Yeah, for public comment. Is that the final question on that item? So, we're working on the amendment that is, "The minutes shall contain a list of the speakers on each side of every question with an abstract or the text of each address." Is there clarity on that? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Convertito, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Fadabean, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, Mr. Llewellyn, opposed. Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Patton. That passes six to three. So, we are now back to it as a principal amendment. Are we ready to act on the principal amendment? And I will read that at the end of the word "official record" in the third sentence, in the third line, "The minutes shall contain a list of the speakers on each side of every question with an abstract or the text of each address." And then it would continue with, "Minutes shall contain a notice of," through the word, "adopt." Is there clarity that that's what we're about to act on? Excuse me. Is there clarity that that's what we're about to act on? Thank you. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand, I mean. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Convertito, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Fadabean, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed. Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Patton. That passes six to three. Item number seven. Mr. Llewellyn. I think this is yours. Yes. Those of you who may not have noticed, on the agenda, the initials are in front of each of the articles being presented, so that it would give me a little hint as to who's supposed to be presenting them. Mr. Llewellyn?
Thank you. So, I guess I would like to make a... I'd like to make a motion to amend each of the bylaws, and we'll take them in order, if I may, please. So...
Amend the motion as further described in enclosure number seven?
As further described in enclosure number seven.
Okay. Is there a second to that? Mrs. Lou McCormick. This amends several sections, correct?
Correct. Well, it's... Yeah, it's 8100. Yes, it's one section.
It essentially takes B, the board shall, one through five, and replaces them with the Roman numeral one, two, three, four, and five. Is that it correct?
That's correct.
So, you wish to make... So that there's clarity on the part of the board? Do you wish to make argument on behalf of your motion?
Of course. Thank you. Actually, and it was actually good to hear the public speak, because there is a lot of misinformation floating around out there about what this really is. There's no intent here to remove any of the responsibilities or leadership of the superintendent or any of the administrators. In fact, if we look at these and we take a sheet of paper that's in the back, which is from CAE, which we saw in a lot of emails, people referencing that, were not following CAE, what you'll find is that these are nearly verbatim off of the CAE sheet as to what does a school board do. You know, one of the things we need to keep in mind here as board members is that we need to ensure that the meetings stay focused on student learning and, you know, other discussions don't overshadow that. And we seem to have lost that. So, what we are... What I'm trying to propose here is that we take what are our current bylaws, which are not very robust, and fill them out with that which is recommended by CAE. So, if we take a look at the first one, you'll see, "Select, Retain, and Evaluate." That is coming right off of the responsibilities. And I believe that may be verbatim. It's in the little box number six, and it is one, two, three. It's the fourth bullet. So, that reads, "Select, Retain, and Evaluate the Superintendent of Schools who serves at the district's chief executive officer and implements board policy." So, I opened that first one up for discussion, because I think we're... Discuss each of these individually?
Well, your motion is to... You have not divided the motion into a separate item on number one versus two versus three versus four versus five.
I would like to divide, please.
Your motion was to adopt...
Right.
To take all five of them and replace the existing five.
But I said I'd like to vote on each one individually, so I didn't use the word "divide." Excuse me.
Okay. Okay. So, then your motion was to amend the bylaws as per enclosure number seven, with it being Roman numeral I, with the letter I.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
And that was what the secondor assumed as well. Discussion on that phrase. Mrs. Max and Cannelly?
I think the fact that the whole board is increasingly referencing CAE is going to be something that's very useful for us as a bit of guiding paperwork. My issue with all five of these amendments is only the fact that they're taken out of context. And I would, speaking of agenda items, I would very much like to have a future discussion where we look at the full document and perhaps do either more changes, adopt more, you know, help us in the setting of priorities and goals. But to... My issue is that in only taking out five, then a decision is inherently made to leave others behind, and I don't know which I'm evaluating over another. And so, my objection is to the choosing only these five out of context. I really want to... And I'm sorry that I had a tougher time viewing them, this size print. I'm fighting off the decisive moment in my life of getting that next set of glasses. But this, for me, was a bit challenging to read, and I really would like to have a fuller board discussion on this. And how can this shape us more? But that was my issue with this, is that it's a few lines, taken out of context. I would like to see the document as a point of discussion for the whole and to see what has meaning to us as a full board. So, that was...
It's not clear whether you're saying we ought to adopt the whole thing, or that we ought to defer discussion on this until we've been able to study the whole thing. I'm not sure what...
She's voting for all five.
So, that... My point being, to make sure that it's clear, I think the CAE documents obviously have great merit. They've been tried by many districts. They're used as a source. We use them in Policy Committee all the time. But, for example, just because CAE mentions it, I don't like a word like "implement." It's not the board that's implementing the policies. So, right away, I see a word that I don't like in the CAE language. That's not what this board does. And that's not to say, though, that I don't think that there are plenty of ideas here that have merit. I would think, as I said, a fuller examination of the whole document is what would be merited here. Until then, I would prefer to stay with our current language, but that is with an eye to the future of looking at this more fully.
And if I can just respond to that briefly. The reason these five were singled out...
Mrs. Lou McCormick, had your hand.
I'll defer to her.
You'll defer to Mr. Llewellyn. Thank you.
The reason these five were singled out is because they were replacing these five. I was supplementing the five that existed. It wasn't like I went hunting for them.
And I didn't mean to imply that I thought that you were cherry picking in that way. I wasn't trying to imply that at all. It's simply that, for me, it prompts a desire for a fuller discussion on the whole organization of it and the ideas of it, and that maybe just one idea by itself needs a second idea to fully explain what is intended by it. And when you only have the one, that might be lost. It might not be. But until I see the entire thing in all of its context, that's what I'm uncomfortable with.
Mrs. Lou McCormick?
So, I do want to point out that this attachment, I believe, was submitted in... When was it? December or whatever, November, from when it was first raised? So, we have had whatever many months, five, six months, to actually review... So we have had whatever many months, five, six months, to actually review the full document and had the link to this to examine it. I think if you do review it more fully, you will see that, in fact, this is a nice abbreviation for what the role of a board is as defined by CAE. And I don't want to speak for you, but, you know, I believe we've had a lot of time, and I would also say that if there is more that you believe that we should be examining and adding to it, that there is the future where we can make future amendments to it and we can add other items that you feel are deserving. But in this particular instance, this is one item and a specific wording from CAE that addresses that very specific issue of the board's responsibilities.
I think, Mrs., we all had the document, but the amendments were specifically targeting these sentences, so the fact that we could have read the whole thing is different.
May I respond?
Quick response, Mr. Fatt, no, no, you can't respond. Can I have a motion to extend the meeting, please?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to, do I have a second? Llewellyn, any debate on that? No debate, all in favor? The minutes will record that we have eight to zero. Mrs. Gerber stepped out for a moment, so now that we are extended, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly wanted to make a comment, and then Mr. Fattabean.
I certainly appreciate Mrs. Lou McCormick's comment because that's certainly something that we've said at the board table before, that when you have time to review something, you need to review something. So I put that on me that I didn't fully articulate what I meant by that. It wasn't a matter of time. Yes, I read it because that's our responsibility. We are supposed to be prepared for the meeting having looked at all. The point I meant to articulate was that it is for the full board to then discuss and pick. I didn't then want to go in and say, well, I like this line better. This is a, CAE information is very full, very comprehensive, and that there might be more. So what I did not do is come in with my own recommendations, well, wait a minute, but I think this line would be better, that I thought this line would be better. That is what I wasn't looking to do at this meeting, but to do that at a future meeting. So to clarify my point, it's not that I needed more time to read the documentation as much as it was a struggle to do so. It was that I didn't think it was my place to just bring in one or two cherry picked ideas of my own, wait, I think this needed to be added, or I think that's out of context. It's that I thought it was a conversation for the full board.
Mr. Fattabean.
I hope I said that better.
It's clear to me that I don't think we're going to be able to resolve this very easily, and that a lot of these amendments are substantive and have fairly large impact possibly. And so what I would propose is that we, I make a motion to move it or refer it to a committee to discuss all this stuff in a smaller body, which is more convenient than do with a board table. And then come back with some presentation.
So you're making a motion to refer, now, we have divided this question, so we're only talking about item number one unless Mr. Llewellyn were to agree that, no, if the board wishes to do that. So, because at the moment, the motion is only on item number one, and so therefore that would leave open that Mr. Llewellyn could then say, okay, item number two I'm going to make is a separate motion. So I just want to clarify that I think that that's where we are.
Well, unless I can rephrase my motion.
Yeah. So I give you guidance if you wish to do so, but let me, so do you wish to rephrase your motion?
Well, my, actually, the intent of the motion would be then, because it makes sense in my mind to refer.
Enclosure number seven?
Well, the agenda items that are on the agenda for discussion of, well, enclosure number, the agenda item closure number seven and agenda item closure number eight.
Well, we're not, okay, you are within your rights to.
They're agenda items.
Yep, you're within your rights to ask for postponement.
I would make a motion to refer agenda item seven, agenda items eight, and I believe those are the only two that are sufficiently complicated that I don't think we're going to get to tonight. And refer those agenda items to a committee.
Can I, while you're clarifying your motion, can I ask, because these are technically in the policy book and because that's the only standing committee that we have, I think you either have to suggest that it goes to that standing committee or use the word ad hoc committee, and then we'll put an ad hoc committee together. So which do you wish to do?
What I, that's just a good question. I was going to, I was going to say.
We only have, in our bylaws, we only have two ways to do that.
Right, no, I understand.
One is the standing committee and the other is the ad hoc committee.
Mrs. Cannelly, chuckle. My impetus now is to do an ad hoc committee.
Ad hoc committee.
Because I think the policy committee has enough to.
Okay, I just do. It's only for clarification so that we have the right language in it. So your official motion is to refer exhibits seven and eight to an ad hoc committee for future reporting back to the board?
To report back on any bylaw amendments relating to those agenda items and their recommendation.
Okay.
I think that'd be a little more beneficial and practical.
Okay, so is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? For the purpose of discussion, I'll second it. Mr. Fattabean, you've got a motion here that says to refer enclosures seven and eight to an ad hoc committee that would report back to the board.
With their recommendations.
With their recommendations.
As to the amendments to the bylaws related to agenda items. Seven and eight. I just think that's much more, an efficient way, more efficient way to do it where that committee can then.
Refer to the committee, refer to an ad hoc committee to discuss those agenda items with their recommendations to the bylaw changes for enclosure number seven and eight.
Right, you want to try and limit it to those seven and eight enclosures.
Well, I'm assuming that that's what the intent of your motion was.
Right.
Have I restated it correctly?
Yeah, I think so. I think that's the intent, because I don't think we're going to do it.
So I'll second it now. Do you wish to make further argument on behalf of it?
My argument is that, you know, I think that there's a lot of concepts in here, there's a lot of language that may or may not have an impact, and I think that deserves a more lengthy discussion and one in which a smaller group may be able to come to some consensus, hopefully, because I don't think the board at the table here is going to be able to come to consensus. And it may be helpful in moving it forward. The decision may be, we don't want to do anything, or we want to do something slightly different, or some things make sense, some things don't make sense, as they debate it and hash it out and learn more about what other bylaws are, what other boards do, what CAE has said, because there's some discussions, what CAE's, you know, recommendations are, and they can go through the specific language at a committee level, a small group, and come to some consensus, hopefully. If they come to consensus and then bring it back to the board, then maybe the board would be more likely to understand it and maybe agree with it.
Okay. Mr. Llewellyn? No, Ms. Carnell followed by Mr. Llewellyn, no, no, Ms. Carnell, please.
Chairman, to Mr. Fattabean, what sort of timeframe are you suggesting with this?
I didn't suggest.
I'm asking you to.
I think it, some agree with the discretion of the committee when they're ready to come back. I don't want to set an artificial timeline, but within a reasonable term up to the committee when they want to come back, when they think they're ready to come back.
I think we should set some sort of time parameters.
We can do that, if you like.
It's a different committee, so it's safe.
You have a time in mind that you think ought to be considered.
Three months.
This is June, July. So you'd want a committee to work over the summer and come back at the August meeting?
No, I don't want anybody to work over the summer. How about the September meeting?
At the September meeting. Their recommendations are reported in, at the September meeting. Is that an acceptable change to you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Is there any objection among the board members to that friendly amendment? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
My only question is that I would, I think it might be appropriate to divide this. Not that I'm looking to have an extended conversation, but I don't, these two, while they, there is a great deal of language there, do very different things, and one may want to be tackled in committee and one the board may be ready to say, take a position on now. I'm just, so I would be interested in dividing that.
Any objection to dividing the question, dealing with this as a motion related to seven and then the same motion related to eight? I see no objection?
I.
Mr. Fattabean made a motion to postpone consideration of enclosure number seven and eight, and Mrs. Maxon Cannelly is asking that the motion be divided so that it's taking action on postponing consideration of enclosure number seven and then take a separate action on whether to postpone number eight. Any objection to dividing the question in that fashion?
Referring to committee.
Yeah, to refer, yeah.
Postpone, refer to committee.
Committee can take a number or another one, report back once it's wanted divided.
No, I'm just trying to clarify what Mrs. Maxon Cannelly was asking. Is there objection to dividing the question into two different items? I'm waiting for somebody to raise their hand. If not, then I'll rule that it's been divided. What? Mrs. Lou McCormick followed by Mr. Patton.
Yeah, I guess I would say that, in a way, they are very related to each other.
On the division, on the question of the division.
On the division, that they're related to each other and that in some sense, if we can't determine Mr. Llewellyn's proposal, then it would be difficult to then rule on this one, because if, in fact, short-term goals and objectives become something that the board wants to do, then the motions inside the next enclosure are more relevant.
So you're arguing not to divide the question?
Yeah, I think I would say that.
Okay, Mr. Patton?
Yeah, I agree with Mrs. Lou McCormick.
So in order to divide the question, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, you'd have to actually put the motion on the table for the board to act on it.
I put the motion on the table.
Okay, so the motion's on the table to divide the question so that Mr. Fattabean's motion to refer to an ad hoc committee would relate only to enclosure number seven. Is there clarity on that?
Motion to divide on that there.
Yeah, to divide, you know, the intent, the impact of that would be to have the motion be acting on only item number seven and then separate action on number eight, the intent of dividing the question. Is there clarity on that?
Yeah.
As to bring Mrs. Gerber up to date, we're debating number seven, but Mr. Fattabean has put on the floor a motion to refer items number seven and eight to an ad hoc committee, and then Mrs. Maxon Cannelly asked that we divide the question, so the motion is right now is, shall we divide the question, seven and eight? A vote in favor of that means that we would have a separate vote on number seven and then another vote on number eight. A vote against the motion to divide would mean that the motion will stay as is with seven and eight acted on together. Clarity? Any questions on that? Okay, if there's clarity on the motion to divide, all in favor, raise your hand. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, all opposed. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Ms. Carnell. Did you have your hand up or not? Mr. Fattabean, Mr. Llewellyn, Mr. Patton, Mr. Dwyer, abstentions? Mr. Confortito, Mrs. Gerber, that's. So it fails. There we go. So it fails. So the motion remains to refer both seven and eight to an ad hoc committee to report back at the September board meeting as to their recommendations for any bylaw changes. Correct, Mr. Fattabean?
With respect to those items in seven.
Yeah, items number seven and eight, correct.
You don't want to open everything up.
No.
So actually, I want to clarify that for me. So it will be to discuss seven and eight, not go out and look at others, or is it to do a revamp?
It is to discuss the concepts in seven and eight and come back with whatever the ad hoc committee wants to recommend.
By the September meeting.
By the September meeting.
To be, to be clear, so that would be for a recommendation in September to be voted in October.
For a recommendation in September, and our normal practice is to present it one and vote at the next meeting.
Correct, thank you.
But of course, the board is free to.
Right.
Do what it wishes. Mrs. Lou McCormick.
And can I clarify, how is an ad hoc committee assembled?
There's a description of that in the bylaws. There's, it's a three-person committee, and the chair points the three-person committee like the chair points all committees.
And I guess, are they all board members?
Yes, the ad hoc committee also has a, the description within the bylaws also has a provision that, that community members could be added to it if, if that seemed appropriate for the item that they're being discussed. And so under that context, when we were discussing the mission and goals committee, we added a dozen or 15 community members to it. Mr. Confortito, we're about to take a vote, are you, you need to take, you need to take a recess.
He is abstaining.
You need to take a recess, okay? Well, he can't, he can't vote in abstention, but does that clarify your question?
No, I guess, yeah.
That's what the bylaws say.
Okay.
So if you can clarify that again, so it's three people, sorry, three people of which the chair picks, they're members of the board, and you can add members of the public.
The chair can add members of the public.
Correct, and what would your intent be?
I hadn't thought of it until somebody just brought that up as an idea, so I haven't thought about it. Advisory committees consisting of three board members appointed by the chairman may be established by majority vote of the board, and so this, this vote is establishing an ad hoc committee from time to time for assignments which the board deems beyond the purpose and scope of the standing committee, the policy committee. The board shall provide a charge to the advisory committee, which shall include the preparation of a written report and recommendations for the board's consideration within a specified period of time, which we have as September. And upon the advisory committee's presentation of a report and recommendations to the board for consideration, the advisory committee shall be deemed dissolved and only the board shall take further action. The chairman and the superintendent or his or her delegate shall be an ex officio members of the advisory committees, and the chairman may appoint ex officio advisors from the community for assistance in gathering information, preparing reports, and making recommendations. It is important to note the last sentence, the advisory committee shall follow the provisions of the Freedom of Information Act as required by state law. That's the description that is in our bylaws of ad hoc committees.
Thank you.
Perfect time.
Now, Mr. Llewellyn asked for the description of advisory committees, so it was timed perfectly. Any other questions on the motion that's in front of us, which is to refer items seven and eight to an ad hoc committee and that their recommendations shall be reported back to the board at our September meeting? Any further clarification that is needed? If not, are we ready to act? All in favor of that as a motion, raise your hand. Mrs. Llewellyn, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Fattabean, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, all opposed. Mrs. Gerber, you're not abstaining, you're opposing.
Opposed.
Mr. Confortito, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, Mr. Llewellyn, Mr. Patton, the motion passes five to, no.
I didn't raise my hand.
I'm sorry, Mr. Llewellyn and Mr. Patton. Did I say?
Four.
I'm sorry. It's 11:15. It's.
Four, five.
Four, five, no, it's five, four.
Want to do that again?
All in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. So it's, it's not four, five, it's five, four. Yeah, okay. So items number seven and eight have been referred to an ad hoc committee. I will develop a charge statement so that the board can see what the charge statement is in, at their, probably their June meeting, if not sooner. Under promise, over deliver. Items number seven and eight are off the agenda. Item number nine is actually. Myon, our Roberts Rules currently have a reference to, our bylaws currently have a reference to adopting Roberts Rules Edition 10. Their current edition is Edition 11, and Roberts Rules suggests that it is wiser to have your bylaws say that we will maintain it in accordance with the current edition of Roberts Rules so that if we get to 12 or 13 or whatever the. Rules, so that if we get to 12, or 13, or whatever the edition is, we are always current, and we don't have to keep updating the bylaws every time they make a change and remember it. So I make a motion to, I violated my own statement here, I make a motion to amend the bylaws as described in enclosure number nine. Do I have a second? Mrs. Max and Cannelly, I mistakenly made my argument in advance, so I won't say another word. Mrs. Max and Cannelly, you seconded it?
Yes, and my discussion is, is I really hope there isn't one.
Any other comments? Any other comments? If not?
I do have one question.
Yeah.
I was reading something in Roberts Rules, and maybe I'm misreading this, but can I read this, and maybe the lawyers or yourself can comment on how I should be interpreting this? It says, under Roberts Rules number 68, I don't know if this is the right version, the amendments of constitutions, bylaws, and rules of order. It says, constitutions, bylaws, rules of orders that have been adopted and contain no rule for their amendment may be amended at any regular business meeting by...
We're not on that motion.
We're not?
No.
Sorry.
Number nine.
I withdraw that completely.
So, so Mrs. Max and Cannelly, hopefully, your, your statement has come true. If there's no further conversation on number nine, are we ready to vote?
On number nine?
On number nine, enclosure number nine, which is essentially going from number 10 to addition 11. Any clarity? Mrs. Lou McCormick, are you?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous, 9-0. Our last of the evening is item number 10, so that's Mr. Patton's.
I want to make a motion to postpone item number 10.
Well...
Is it on the floor?
It's not on the floor yet, so let me get it on the floor, and then you can postpone item number 10. Mr. Patton?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendment that is stated on item number 10.
To amend the bylaws as further described in enclosure number 10. Mr. Confortito has seconded it. I'm going to, I'm sorry, but I am following a certain procedure. The maker of the motion gets the first argument, then I'll come to you.
Your friend got it.
I know it. I know it, but in fairness.
But, but we had an earlier motion to extend the meeting indefinitely. The RCM went till 3:00 AM, come on.
Please, please, please make your argument.
My argument is quite simple, and tonight's discussion is, is a perfect illustration of that, is that bylaws in many organizations, corporations, towns, et cetera, are meant to be fairly general rules in which to operate, and the more specific you get, the more you run into trouble, especially in, in towns where, you know, boards will change as election cycles come and go. Therefore, to change a bylaw, it needs to be, I'm not saying that anybody else's amendments are not important, but it needs to be so important that you have a supermajority to do it. If a bylaw is that important that it really needs to be changed, it should have the consensus of two-thirds of a board, and that's why I proposed this amendment.
Who seconded that? Confortito, just following the process, I'm sorry.
I seconded it.
Or you just want to concur?
No. And I fully support the motion. The problem, we have backed ourselves into a corner with this, okay? If you approve this motion, the thrust you just sent to committee is doomed, which, not necessarily, okay, but you can't pass it unless you get a two-thirds majority vote, okay? And quite honestly, I would like nothing better than that, but in fairness to my other board members, although I seconded it, and I know Mr. Fattabene is going to put a motion to postpone on the table, and I'll be in favor of that.
Fattabene?
That's exactly the reason why I most opposed, postponed, agenda item 10 until the September meeting. I think out of fairness, Mr. Confortito is completely accurate, out of fairness, you just referred something to committee, we're operating under our existing bylaws, let them come back and make their presentation, and be persuasive or not persuasive, and in order to, in order to make it at all fair, and it all, you know, they have to abide by the same rules as the bylaws have now. So the change now, I think, would be...
Can I, can I suggest that you say the word November, which is when we normally do the bylaws, because then if we get the report in September, and we act on it in October, we shouldn't be acting on this under your concept until after we've acted on whatever committee's recommendation.
I think out of fairness, it has to be done.
I'm sorry, did, nobody seconded it yet?
Yeah, John did.
John, Mr. Confortito did, yeah, yeah.
So, may I modify?
So I'm only suggesting that it needs to follow...
That's fine.
...the decision.
And to modify that ever so slowly, if things get pushed back, it should be, this will be acted upon, upon approval or rejection of the other, however you want to phrase it, but this shouldn't be done until after.
Next regularly meeting, after the presentation of the report.
After the vote.
Right.
It can be the same day, but it has to be after the vote.
After the action is taken...
Correct.
Because the vote...
If any, on the report.
Because the action could be, we've decided not to take any action.
Right.
I mean, there's always a possibility a board could say, you know, thanks for the report. I mean, there's a, there's a possibility that a...
You mean if we withdraw our options?
Well, that'd be an action on the report.
No, no, that, that the ad hoc committee will present their recommendations. It's within the purview of a board to say, thank you, we've accepted your report, and choose not to take action on it. I mean, a committee could, a board could do that.
No, but you still have to take action on our...
They have to accept and reject.
Let me rephrase my motion.
We would have to accept and reject.
Rephrase the motion.
Yeah, so, so this clarity, what we're trying to accomplish as a board is to not take action on this until after there is action taken on the ad hoc committee's report.
Not action, but an actual vote on the recommendation, either for or against.
Right, we have to make a vote on...
No, no, and so, so therefore, Mr. Fattabene, I think, is not accepting that as a friendly amendment, because he's thinking, after the presentation, then we go.
Well, I, I think that it would be after the acceptance or rejection, or we can exclude that from this rule.
On the second, on the, on the second regularly meeting after the presentation of the report.
Okay, perfect.
Second regular meeting after the presentation of the report.
So if you're going to act, you're going to act. If you're not, you're not.
Yeah, that gives us two meetings to act, and if we don't act in two meetings, that probably is...
Not going to act.
Not going to act. So that's the motion. Mr. Confortito, that was the second. Does the board accept that it's two regular meetings after the presentation? Is that an acceptable, unanimous consent, friendly amendment?
I'd like to make, I'd like to make one question before...
Mr. Fattabene?
Please. Mr. Fattabene, would it be easier to vote this, whatever timeframe, but exclude the vote related to what has just been referred? That way, the vote will occur, and it won't get gummed up?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So you're saying it can be referred, it can be referred to ad hoc.
Right.
The ad hoc will come back with...
In September.
A report.
Yeah.
That report can be accepted, or rejected, or sent back.
Whatever, yeah.
So let's hypothetically, it's sent back for revision, and there it languishes for the winter. Then you have not accomplished what was trying to be accomplished here, so it might be easier to exclude...
No, and I would suggest that, that every board has the ability to postpone an item, and if we found that what-if scenario came true, the board could clearly, if the intent is to say, this should take precedence after, we could postpone it at the second meeting. This only says when I'm supposed to put it on the agenda.
Right, and I, I think I would prefer to say excluding this, that way, and we don't need to worry about intent later, we have statements.
Fattabene?
I think that there's enough safeguard to, you know, if it's at the second meeting after the presentation, and in the instance, it's referred back to a committee, then at the second meeting, you postpone it again until the committee comes back again. I don't, I think it'd be too complicated.
So you're satisfied with the motion as you presented?
It's more definite, it's, you know, it's just more definite in my mind. I think the board's going to have to act one way or another at the presentation, and, and then act on this other agenda item in due course. So, I don't, I think it's enough safeguards.
So, do you accept Mr. Fattabene's argument, Mr. Llewellyn? Or do you wish to do something? While you're thinking, is there any other comments from the board on Mr. Fattabene's motion to postpone enclosure number 10 until the second regular meeting following the presentation by the ad hoc committee?
You know, I do have...
Related number, number seven and eight. So you're good. So now, Mrs. Lou McCormick?
I'm generally good with the concept, and I guess what I'm, I have a question with is this kind of concept of not making, the board not making a decision, and deferring the decision indefinitely, so thus avoiding making a decision. And does the ad, if the ad hoc committee makes a recommendation for or against, can the board vote to the contrary of the recommendation? Or must we accept their recommendation?
Absolutely.
It's not to the motion of postponement.
Yeah, no. If you're asking for clarification on the motion of postponement, because your debate has to be on the motion to postpone, there's probably any number of what-if scenarios that might exist out there. The committee makes a report to the board, and the board has the power within its nine members to do what it wishes to do with any report. Okay. Any clarification needed on the motion to postpone? Any clarification needed on the motion to postpone?
I have one, one more clarification. What you said, though, is your intent would be, if this hasn't been resolved, to postpone the vote on the two-thirds, until it is. Is that, am I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, that's what I thought of her as your intent.
My intent is...
For the minutes, of course.
My intent to follow this motion is it will show up at the second regular meeting after the report. It'll be on the agenda.
Okay.
And then it's up to the board to say, look, we haven't acted on it, we're not ready to act on it, and so let's postpone this further. But this would tell me that I have to put it on the second regular meeting after the presentation, for the board to then decide what to do with it. I wouldn't have the discretion, it's, then it's up to the board.
Got it, thank you.
Any other further clarification? If not, all, do we understand the motion that's in front of you? To postpone to the second regular meeting after the ad hoc committee reports on items number seven and eight. All in favor, raise your hand. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Confortito, Ms. Carnell, Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Fattabene, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed? Mr. Patton, that passes eight to one.
I did that, I've done that for you also.
Now, so, we now have a motion that is on the floor to, which is the original motion, that the Board of Education bylaws be approved as amended, which means the amendments that we have accepted, and the wording that we've accepted, will now be incorporated into those bylaws, and there'll be a new date on those bylaws, and then depending on action we might take in the future on those last eight, nine, and 10 items, they'll be amended once again. So that, so that that's why we're making, that's why we're voting this particular motion. So is there any, is there a clarification needed on that motion? This is the main motion, as amended. Okay. All in favor of the main motion, that the Board of Education bylaws be approved as amended? Raise your hand. One, three. Okay, I have to do it this way. Mrs. Lou McCormick, Mr. Confortito, Ms. Carnell, Mr. Fattabene, Mrs. Max and Cannelly, Mr. Llewellyn, all opposed? Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Dwyer, Mr. Patton. So that main motion passes six to three. And one, one last comment. Normally, the bylaws are addressed in November, and with ideas floated, and then in December with, with action. And sometimes, we've moved that action to January, this time, we've moved it to May. It is my fervent hope that if any board members have a thought as to how to amend the bylaws next year, that you would advance those ideas. I'm not talking about items number seven and eight, and number 10, but if, that you would advance those ideas in advance, so that of the November meeting, people will know what we're talking about. Number one, and number two, Mr. Fattabene, by the vagaries of the agenda, might have wanted to put another suggestion forward, other than what was on, you know, back when we were talking about the Order of Business item number four, and I moved on to number five, and there seemed to be an idea that you had in your head. I'm not inviting you to describe the idea, but I'm suggesting that any board member could put a proposal forward, and we could act on it at any time. So you don't have to wait till November, or you can wait till November to deal with your question.
Right, no, I appreciate that.
Okay? Any further business to come before the board? If not, a motion to adjourn? Ms. Carnell, Mr. Confortito, all in favor, raise your hand. It's, I'll declare it unanimous while the two of them are talking.